Distracted driving and driving under the influence of drugs and alcohol are all contributing factors to these accidents.
The city has partnered with United Services Automobile Association and Cambridge Mobile Telematics for the contest.
According to the World Health Organization, distracted driving has become a global epidemic, and all of us here are responsible for that.
L.A.'s safest driver app will score your driving based on five things: speed, acceleration, braking, cornering, and phone distraction. Yes, they actually have a way to track if you're using your phone while driving. So if you're serious about winning some cash this summer while you're driving, I would recommend paying attention to those five things.
It will be activated based on phone movement and deactivated when the phone is turned off. At the conclusion of each entry period, the driving scores for each trip are totaled. The driver with the highest scores in the selected categories will receive cash prizes at the end of this campaign.
There will be bi-weekly prizes as well as five grand prizes at the end of the contest. You can download L.A.'s safest driver app from the App Store or Google Play.
For more information, you can also check out lasafestdriver.com. Well, no more dodging cars to get across the street. Residents in the Fairfax district can now cross the street safely as a new traffic signal is installed on a very popular intersection.
I staked it out one Saturday morning, and my heart was in my mouth every time I saw a little group of kids running across the street. And I was just waiting to see a 10-year-old get run over. It was a huge danger, and so we did everything we could to push it forward. And this is a great day now that we are able to actually formally light the signal.
There we go.
It's also important because it is also the beginning of our bicycle-friendly streets. We got a grant a number of years ago to install some neighborhood-scale bike-friendly treatments to make biking in our neighborhood safer and more pleasant. A little bike lane pocket as well as a bike signal.
It's also really important because it's part of our larger plan to create these neighborhood greenways through our area that will allow people to really have an enjoyable experience walking and biking through the neighborhood.
Seniors get into the dance groove at this party, the hosts, Metro Art and Metro's On the Move Riders Program. And while it's fun, it also helps Metro get more seniors to take trains and buses. Anna Marcos joins the bash at El Pueblo.
These senior citizens are getting down, and they get a little wild, as they dance to the tropical beat of Susie Hansen's Latin band.
A lot of people are dancing, and the more they dance, the better we play.
I want to enjoy myself. I'm gonna be 88, and I want to enjoy myself all I can.
And Tina Martinez is enjoying herself with double the fun. She's part of a mother-daughter duo.
I'm getting my actor fly.
The party at El Pueblo is part of the Raised on Records concert series for seniors, held at different places throughout L.A. County. It's put on by Metro's On the Move Riders Program and Metro Art.
Well, I am. I don't want to get rusty.
It's good for memory. It's good for, it releases endorphins, so you feel better. It's a way to just have fun with your fellow seniors.
But this is about more than just fun dance moves. Metro wants to get these seniors on the move, and that's why it has about a dozen booths to show them how to get around town and have fun.
Our On the Move Riders Program strives to empower older adults to learn how to use the buses and trains. So we throw in some transit education with a little salsa today and to hopefully excite them about using public transportation.
Many of these seniors are taking part in the On the Move Riders Program and its network of social clubs, 30 all over the county. Some of these guys are even travel buddy volunteers.
As travel buddies, we plan the trips.
Last week, we went to the Universal City Walk. We took 15 people with us. We've been in Santa Monica, the beach, we've been twice to that. Good for seniors to get them out of their homes. A lot of people kind of enjoy watching TV, sitting down, doing nothing. And we almost go home and knock on the door. Some of my neighbors too, to get them out, and some of them are with us today.
We enjoy being around people.
A song that I wrote. How many people here are both?
We teach them how to get around on the bus if they've never been on the bus.
Absolutely. To dance, to meet new people, to be active in any way is always a good thing.
With senior outings like this, hopping on L.A.'s trains and buses just doesn't get more fun.
If you're a senior who'd like to know more about the On the Move Riders Program, its clubs, or volunteer opportunities, visit metro.net/onthemove, or call 213-922-2299. While he played a major role in the cultural history of Los Angeles from the 1800s to the 1920s, Charles Fletcher Lemus lived in northeast L.A. and in 1907 founded the Southwest Museum, the first public museum in L.A. The three-day Lemus Festival honors his great contributions to our city.
Lemus Days is the festival of northeast L.A., but it's a celebration of the diversity and the talent and creativity of northeast L.A. neighborhoods. He named the festival after Charles Lemus because Charles Lemus was the first person to talk about the concept of multiculturalism in Los Angeles. He was a very seminal figure in L.A. history. First city editor of the L.A. Times, the city librarian very, very early on. This is the Southwest Museum, which was founded by Charles Lemus. Lemus also founded this place as the city's first museum, and also his home, which is just a few blocks away from here, Lemus Home, which he built by hand from river rock, is a city park as well.
We're painting sort of the time that Lemus lived and back to actually the turn of the century. So we have models that go back to that era, and we're painting them here at different locations at Southwest Museum.
Lemus fought to preserve Native American culture. He fought to recognize the contributions of Latino culture here in Los Angeles. He was very, very involved at a time when that was very unfashionable in bringing in other groups and forging a culture out here, a society out here in Los Angeles.
When it comes to keeping your community clean, sometimes it does take a village. Residents in MacArthur Park rolled up their sleeves and helped clean their neighborhood.
When public works comes in with a cleanup, we come in with everything. We come in with the trucks for bulky items. We come in to paint over graffiti. We get Weetabah. We give our trees. We inform the community in different resources. We build groups, and we build a community within a community on cleaning up and those that are interested in cleaning up.
I just moved to the neighborhood, and I hate walking to my car because there's so much trash on the street, and I wanted to be a part of beautifying. Look at all these volunteers and this trash. None of these people even live in this neighborhood. They're coming from other neighborhoods to help us in our neighborhood, and I hope that my neighbors and the residents of this area take a look and sustain it.
I like picking it up because I don't like people littering. That's making the park dirty.
I feel like I'm a superhero, and the park is in trouble, and I'm saving it.
Wherever we live, we want it to be clean.
Please take care of your neighborhoods.
They are the champions again. The Granada Hills community celebrates another national title. Students now have one less thing they need to pay for, and Metro adds more electric bikes to their fleet. All this in City B. Councilmember Greg Smith was on hand to celebrate Granada Hills Charter High School's seventh, yes, seventh, U.S. Academic Decathlon National Championship in the last nine years. At the ceremony, a championship sign was unveiled showing passersby who the current champs are.
It's a great achievement that these young students have risen to the highest level of academic achievement in the United States of America.
As part of a one-year pilot program, students from L.A. Unified School District and L.A. Community College District will be offered free dash bus passes. The L.A. DOT and councilmembers Paul Kerkorian and Mike Bonin collaborated on this program to help students cut extra costs. Why deal with the hassle of driving in L.A. when you can get around on bike? Metro just added 300 more electric bicycles to stations across the city. Download the Metro Bike Share app to find a nearby station and ride off to your destination. As we age, we can all use a little help staying fit and healthy. That's why the Department of RAC and Parks put on a health fair, offering a variety of services to help our seniors live longer, healthier lives.
We're here today, and we're collaborating with Humana because it's so important for older adults to learn about fitness demonstrations, the fitness activities that are available to them through recreation and parks, as well as all the resources that we have here from community and city and county to help them become more healthy, more active, for longevity.
Humana has a partnership with the L.A. Parks and Recs to help their seniors provide free educational information about health and wellness. Many people don't know all the benefits available to them, so we're providing this free service to them to educate them on the opportunity that they can expand their Medicare coverage with Humana.
I think health fairs are so crucial to engaging with the community. It's really a way to promote health and wellness, a way to drive people to be more aware of what's going on with their body and health as it pertains to the community in general.
We have clinicians here that can talk to them about their health and make recommendations for them so they can seek their, and ask questions to their own healthcare provider.
I think it's an advantage for people to come out and take a part in what's around them, in their surrounding area. Anytime you want to increase your knowledge about health and wellness, take advantage of it.
Celebrate Pride Month with the first-ever Pride at the Port event. Take part in an Ancestral Festival of the Masks. And if you love bread like I do, don't want to miss the Bread Festival at Grand Market. All this in Things to Do. Come join Councilman Joe Buscagino and the Bridge Cities Alliance for the first annual Pride on the Port of Los Angeles. Hosted on the L.A. waterfront at the Battleship Iowa, this one-day festival welcomes everyone to join in on the celebration with cocktails, food trucks, dancing, and more. Pride on the Port L.A. has its maiden launch on Saturday, June 15th, beginning at 11:00 a.m. The event is happening at the Pacific Battleship Center, located at 250 South Harbor Boulevard, berth 57. For tickets, visit settickets.us. The Day of the Ancestors Festival of the Masks returns for its eighth year. This event brings communities together to honor the ancestors and celebrate culture from the vast African diaspora. Enjoy mask-making workshop and musical performances at the Day of the Ancestors Festival of the Masks, happening Saturdays in June starting at 1:00 p.m. Festivities take place in Lamert Park Village Plaza at 4343 Lamert Boulevard. For details, check out their listing on Eventbrite.com. The Los Angeles Bread Festival is back. Get ready to carb load as Grand Central Market hosts the fifth year of this popular bread festival. This free one-day event is a celebration of SoCal's artisanal bread renaissance. This pop-up marketplace will be showcasing local bread bakers, as well as bread-centric workshops and demonstrations. The L.A. Bread Festival takes place at the Grand Central Market Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at 317 South Broadway. For more info, visit grandcentralmarket.com/events. And that's a look at some things to do. That's it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay. From all of us here at L.A. This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. We're also on Facebook, Twitter, and YouTube. See you next time for more of L.A. This Week.
If you're in an accident, just stay. Call 911. Help if you can. You might save someone's life. Obey the rules of the road.
Good morning, members. Sergeant. Sergeant, please. Please call members' offices. Ask the police. Report downstairs to Medicare Council meetings. Thank you.
Sergeant Smith, you can call members' offices. Ask them to report downstairs to the city council meeting. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is Tuesday, June 11th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. Madam Clerk, we have a quorum. Let's go ahead and run through the agenda.
Blooming, Phil, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Harastas, and Weezer, Coetz, Cricorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, Smith, Wesson. Ten members present and a quorum. Madam President.
Okay, first order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Rodriguez moves and Mr. Bronnfield seconds next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Smith moves and Mr. Weezer seconds next.
Madam President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
Can we all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Councilwoman Rodriguez, can you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this morning?
Thank you, Madam President. You all face the flag, right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's run through the agenda.
Madam President, there is a request from a member to continue items 17 to July 31st.
Okay, without objection, that will be the order. What's next?
Items 1 through 15 are items noted for public hearing.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have cards? Members, are there any specials?
There are cards on item 1.
Okay, if there are no any other additional cards and members have not called any other items special, then go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
Next item?
Items 16 through 19 are items for which public hearings have been held. There is a request to hold item 16 on the desk.
Members, are there any other specials? Okay, seeing now, let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
What's next?
Madam President, items 20 through 50 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before us. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards on any of these items?
Yes, there are cards on items 27, 28, 30, 32, 33, 36, 37, 38, and 39.
Members, are there any specials? Mr. O'Farrell, item 38 for you.
But it's, uh, they're comment cards, yeah.
Okay, it's being held for cards as well. Thank you. Mr. Price, did you have 28 for Mr. Price? It's also being held for cards as well. Let's go ahead and vote on the remaining items. Let's open the row. Mr. Smith? We got it. Okay, let's go ahead and open the row. Close the row and tabulate the votes.
Eleven ayes.
And Madam President, those ordinances will be carried over one week to June 18th unless reconsidered later today with 12 members present. Madam President, that then takes council back to presentations, items called special or general public comment.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and start our presentation.
Good morning, Madam President and colleagues. Today's a great day because today is Happy River Day. And you know, I am joined today by so many of the river champions from Friends of the Los Angeles River, the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, L.A. Riverworks, Heal the Bay, and many, many more who are all here to celebrate our one and only Los Angeles River. And you know, this is my first year taking over as Chair of the Committee that has rivers, arts parks and rivers. And you know, I have to some, our office is gonna think of something creative because you know, I really thank Councilman O'Farrell in the past for doing this every year and having that amazing video. So no video this year, next time, but we'll think of something. But the Los Angeles River is our origin story. It's what gave life to the Tongva people who settled on its shores. It provided food and shelter for the early Mexican explorers, and it was the first water source for a fledgling city. The Los Angeles River is the force that shaped our city. And its 51 miles, which flows from the valley to the ocean, connects us to our natural and cultural history. That history was almost lost when the river was encased in concrete and became just another industrial fixture in our growing urban environment. I didn't know the story of our river until when I was growing up in the 1980s. I didn't know how important it was in shaping our city, nor the creatures or habitats that relied off its existence. Little did I know that at the same time, a group of intrepid volunteers led by Louis McAdams braved rough conditions and even risked arrest to imagine a new future for our Los Angeles River and bringing our city back to its natural roots. Today, we are engaged, a generation of river champions, and are celebrating the 30 years of the Great Los Angeles River Cleanup. Together, we have put forth bold new futures for our Los Angeles River, including new access points to the river and to Griffith Park, restoration work to revitalize our long neglected habitats, and at long last, over $18 million in state funding that will finally make one continuous bike path along the Los Angeles River a reality. The city has committed its focus, its energy, and its resources to restoring and revitalizing our Los Angeles River. It is something I am proud to fight for as Chair of the Committee on the Rivers, and I am so grateful to allies like Mayor Eric Garcetti and our Councilmember Mitchell Farrell, our previous Chair, who have done so much to bring our river back. But let us not forget where it all started. This effort did not begin with City Hall, but among activists, nonprofits, and visionaries like those at the Friends of the Los Angeles River, the MRCA, and so many others that are here today. This work will only continue with their leadership and with the involvement of everyday Angelenos. So I invite everyone to get to know our river, not just during the Great L.A. River Cleanup, but every day. Here to tell us about how we can all get involved is Marissa Christensen, the Executive Director of the Friends of the L.A. River. And but before she comes up, I want to play a short video of the work of Folar that is doing for our river.
Thank you so much for being here at the 30th Annual Great L.A. River Cleanup. The river is a historic river. This is why the city of Los Angeles was founded where it was. And it was a wild southwestern riparian river. So it's a very unique ecosystem. For 30 years, we've been mobilizing over 70,000 people to remove over 400 tons of trash from this impaired yet beautiful waterway. These volunteers are here on our kickoff weekend at the Sipulveda Basin to improve our community, improve our environment. If you are looking for a way to make tangible, visible, and immediate impact in your community, this is it. Every piece of trash that you pick up is a piece of trash that doesn't end up in our Pacific Ocean. We need all of the volunteers to get involved with us at folar.org and help us advocate for the river that's gonna actually be for all Angelenos and wildlife alike. Thank you very much. My name is Marissa Christensen. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of the Los Angeles River. Thank you to Councilmember Ryu for hosting the 6th Annual L.A. River Day here at City Hall. It's occasions like this that we remember how far the river has come in gaining its rightful stature as a fixture in Los Angeles's environmental legacy. For 30 years, Folar has been at the helm of the river movement, fighting many times alongside each of you for an equitably accessible and ecologically restored Los Angeles River. This city's river was once a place where the communities who lived alongside it gathered and was the bedrock of ecological health and diversity in this city. We believe this can be so again. The best future for this river is one that is stewarded collectively, and it's with that in mind that we mobilize thousands of volunteers in our cleanup every year and introduce thousands of schoolchildren to the river every year in hopes that these volunteers, these students, go forward into their lives and become river stewards in their communities. As you saw, we celebrated our 30th Annual Cleanup this year. It's now the largest river cleanup in the country, and we hosted 6,000 volunteers. And now we plan to call on those volunteers again to advocate with us as we launch our Crack the Concrete campaign aimed at two projects in a very unique stretch in this river. I'll wrap up, I promise. Taylor Yards G2 River Park and the Casitas Lofts. One of these projects supports our long-shared vision for the river. One of them threatens it. It's this stretch of river that has the potential to be 100 acres of continuous open space. It's entirely unique, and it's our only opportunity that we have right now to heal environmental and cultural scars in this city. And that is why we support a vision for Taylor Yards that actually accomplishes the habitat restoration and concrete removal on this section of the river, long-promised at this site, and why we are opposing Casitas Lofts, a 420-unit, mostly market-rate housing development sandwiched between the two freeway and the future Bowtie State Park. This is our biggest opportunity to meaningfully repair our environment and invest in a future river that is a resource for all Angelenos and wildlife. It's taken us 30 years to get to this moment. Let's get it right. And with that, I thank you for the time, for your leadership, for your stewardship. We look forward to advocating with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa. Next up from the L.A. Riverworks, in the office of Eric Garcetti, is Michael Affelt, Director of L.A. Riverworks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rue, Councilmember O'Farrell, for your leadership over the years, the great River Eight, all eight districts that have a piece of the river running through them and the entire City Council. On behalf of Mayor Eric Garcetti's office, my boss, Deputy Mayor Barbara Romero, I am thrilled to be here to celebrate another fantastic year of L.A. River accomplishments. The stakeholders here, the committed NGOs, the excellent professionals and design firms that are involved, their work every day has advanced us to where we are now, and we've had a lot to celebrate this last year. We had the opening of Albion Riverside Park in Lincoln Heights, the groundbreaking for the Red Car Pedestrian Bridge in Councilmember O'Farrell's district, a lot of success with state funding, the $18 million that Councilmember Rue mentioned to help build a piece of the L.A. Riverway path, another substantial award to bring active transportation crossings near the Verdugo Wash. We've just broke ground on the Taylor Yard Bridge to connect Cypress Park to Elysian Valley, and just last week, the EPA awarded half a million dollars to help clean up a Taylor Yard G2. It's been a really amazing year. And again, thanks to the work of the dedicated folks behind me and your dedicated work. Next up for this year, planning on the upper tributaries that deserve the attention that the rest of the river has deserved. The first public use of Taylor Yard G2 is on the horizon. We're exploring new partnerships to make sure that we are being efficient and smart and coordinated as we build out these projects, and we are making progress on new pieces of the L.A. Riverway path, including groundbreaking on the horizon in Canoga Park and advanced design work to bridge the eight miles of path through downtown L.A. led by Metro. So again, thank you so much for having me. On behalf of Mayor Garcetti, my boss, Deputy Mayor Barbara Romero, and the L.A. Riverworks team, Edward and Stacy, thank you, Councilmember Rue, for having me. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Michael. Next up is an organization that is near to my heart, not just for what they do with the river, but for the mountains, our wildlife corridors, and our precious open space, and that's the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. And from the MRCA, I'd like to invite up Chief Ranger Fernando Gomez.
Good morning, everyone. Fernando Gomez, Chief Ranger for Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority. I've actually had the pleasure of, you know, starting with this program back when it was just a thought, a pilot program, when, you know, we thought, what, how can we actually do something with the river? And someone had a vision, you know, and Ed Reyes had that vision, along with Tom, who's here, who, you know, they had the vision, and it's actually sprung from there eight years later with the leadership of Councilmember O'Farrell. And moving forward, has this recreation has grown now to two different zones. It's brought thousands and thousands of people who otherwise would not have actually viewed the Los Angeles River to the potential that it has. And it's our job now is to continue this progress, this work forward into allowing others who actually see the rivers just as a channel. But if you actually ever get the opportunity to kayak, and I invite you to, just reach out, we would love to be able to do this for you and bring you out to see what the river actually has to offer. The life that this river has, the things that it, the opportunities that are actually out there for us to enjoy, to us to actually have a gem, a recreation in our backyards is enormous. And I think that the leadership from now, Councilmember Rue's office, who's gonna be taking lead on this, we will be, you know, we'll be enjoying that new leadership and that new partnership. But again, we could not have do this with all the different departments. L.A. Sanitation, who's been a great partnership with us and has actually supported us throughout this, Department of Water and Power, and now Bureau of Engineers as well, so Army Corps of Engineers. Again, they see this vision, they see this value, and again, us at the MRCA, the Conservancy, over 20 years of working on the L.A. River has actually given us this opportunity to just start expanding and opening new recreation areas. So I invite you all to come out whenever you have an opportunity. We would love to be able to, you know, make this opportunity, you know, a reality for your team and for your, any nonprofit organization that you may be working with that can benefit from this. So thank you all very much for your leadership and your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Gomez. Now, before we present this proclamation and commendation for the L.A. 6th Annual River Day, we have a surprise guest, and I'd like to take the privy to bring him up, and that's Councilmember Tom LaBarge, because seeing, Madam President, we only have one presentation today. Love to hear from the council member.
Get up here, too. Get up here, Mayor's man. Madam President, members of the great Los Angeles City Council, we have a great opportunity because of the blessings of these people. And Mitchell Farrell, two bridges, not one, but two bridges are being built. I know, but I'm giving you two, and I'm giving David one and a half, and Mike Bonin, you'll get up there, too, because we start up in Griffith Park and go in where Batman came out of that cave to Bayona Creek. I think of Dorothy Green, I think of Mayor Tom Bradley, the first meeting, Paul Cricorian was at Chatsworth High in 1988. The first meeting we had was in Mayor Bradley's office. So all this is coming together. Everybody's doing a great job. Mr. Weezer, the great bridges, we're working on a duck tour above ground, but when we recover the great bridges, which was part of the City Beautiful Movement in 1926 when they started. And Gilbert, the great man from Roosevelt High. Gilbert Sadio, you're putting it together with the bridge in Elysian Valley where Annette Cordona lived, who played Chacha de Gigorio in Grease. It's all connected, folks. It's good to see you. It's been four and a half years since I've seen a microphone, and it's good to see one today. Love you all, love the river, and love David Rue for doing what he's doing and partnering with Mitchell Farrell, passing upon to Bob Bloonfield, the great work. And Noor, you got the best because you got the Sipulveda Basin. So I'll walk back and exit and say, "Good day, everyone."
Nice to see you, Tom.
We love Tom. Thank you, Tom. And you know, with that, I'd like to present this commendation celebrating our river's past, present, and future.
Mr.?
Oh, was there someone on speaker?
We have our member, Mr. O'Farrell, would like to say a few words.
How could I not say something? So Tom LaBarge, I'm claiming four new bridges across the Los Angeles River connecting the 4th District, the 13th District, the 1st District across the L.A. River. River, all while we're in office, including funding for the bridge that connects the city of Glendale to the city of Los Angeles in North Atwater Village over the Verdugo Wash. And we're doing this because we're building upon 30 years of the wonderful organization that is Folar. You know, Lewis McAdams always talked about connectivity, Ed Reyes talked about connectivity, about the neighborhoods that have been neglected. You know, the Los Angeles River is, in a way, our spiritual guide, and it connects eight council districts in a way that, you know, in a way, we have a river caucus with the eight council districts, because this is where it all began. And as we reclaim, as we improve the habitat, as we start, I think, the renovations and we, we take better care, we're better stewards of the river, and we start investing real resources in restoring the habitat and building the infrastructure. We are fulfilling the vision of Folar from those 30 years ago. I want to thank Fernando, you're amazing. Thank you so much for all of your advocacy over the years. I know that you'll continue that. Michael Wellsad for the L.A., for the River Works, wonderful. Marissa, you're an amazing Executive Director, and we're so happy you're, you're there, and all of the volunteers and the staff for the organizations that are stewards of the river. Now, we are about to move forward with that enhanced infrastructure financing district to help accomplish and further the goals that we all have, and, and that really is what it's all about moving forward. So how do we synthesize all of this great history, all of the incredible thought and activism over the years, and to bring the river to the next level, start removing and remediating the brownfields, establish the habitat in such a way that someday the steelhead trout will come back? We should always remember that as our vision and our goal when we approach improvements at the L.A. River. Mr. Ryu, thank you so much for carrying this forward. I think we're going to do wonderful things with your leadership in this committee now. And I just can't say enough about the Los Angeles River, where it all started, and, and 10,000 years ago, where the Tongva really established their roots. So there's a spiritual, a very strong spiritual component to this. We have an obligation to our ancestors to bring it back fully. So thank you so much, and God bless the Los Angeles River. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers on the cue, Mr. Ryu.
Thank you, Madam President. So I'd like to present this commendation to celebrate our Sixth Annual River Day to everyone here who's made today possible. Thank you so very much, and thank you, colleagues.
Sherry, one more, right here, hold it up real high. Hold it up real high, real high, real high. Up your head. Here we go, team. Everybody put their hand on it. Here we go, the river.
Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration on the ordinance.
And that would be for items 21 through 26, Madam President.
Let's go ahead and vote on reconsideration. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, the ordinance are now before us. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and take up items 33 and 39 together. We've got a number of speakers on these items, so if I call your name, please stand behind the podium so we can get through our speakers quickly. Linda Gravani. Michael Guerra. Liliana Sanchez, are you here? You want to stand behind our first speakers? Nina Royale. Is Nina Royale here? Good morning, Linda. And you're only speaking on one item, is that correct? Item 33?
That is correct.
Okay, you have one minute. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good morning. According to the law census, there's approximately 50,000 residents within the boundaries of Lake Balboa. We also represent employees of the Anheuser-Busch Van Nuys Airport, along with commercial entities. As a representative of all these stakeholders, the Lake Balboa Neighborhood Council at the June 5, 2019 Brown Act noticed meeting voted to unanimously support Council File 190002-S50, which opposes AB 516. Our streets will become parking lots for RVs, abandoned cars, not to mention the Sepulveda Basin. The quality of life in our community will be negatively impacted if AB 516 passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name's Mike O'Garrus, Sun Valley Area Neighborhood Council. Driving in the state of California is a privilege, not a right. There's got to be consequences for people who violate the rules. Unfortunately, relaxing the rules has led to many unintended consequences, mostly in the area of health and safety. Many of these mobile homes are not entirely functional. They lack working electricity, water, and toilet facilities. This results in unsafe and sound sanitary conditions. We have businesses and residents looking to move from our area because of an economic hardships of constantly cleaning up the mess, having to steam clean the sidewalks in front of their businesses and properties, as well as the loss of income and employees. Employees are leaving because they don't want to deal with the filth. All cities are unique. One city, one size does not fit all. Los Angeles is blessed by terrific weather, great topography. We have mountains, desert, and oceans. That's why people live here instead of other peoples in a state with different appeals to different people. The state shall leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Next speaker is Liliana Sanchez, followed by Nina Royale, followed by Scott Andrews and Sandy Andrews. Are you here?
Hello. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Solentanga Neighborhood Council. I'm asking for additional time for the community impact statement that was presented. Is that okay?
Very well. Hold her time for just a second.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
I'm, I'm holding your time for just a second. Hold on for just a second.
Sure.
Okay, you have up to five minutes on your community impact. Go ahead. Five minutes.
Okay. So I'm in here on behalf of the Solentanga Neighborhood Council. For the following reasons, please work proactively to prohibit passage of Assembly Bill 516 or at the very least prevent it supplying to the city and county of Los Angeles. Although well-intended, intended, it's, it afflicts unforeseen negative consequences on law-abiding residents, the homeless, and every governmental treasury. It is too vast and sweeping. Smaller measures will work. AB 516, which recently passed the California Assembly, would prevent statewide law enforcement officers from using toes in impounds to police, scuffle, parking violators, overnight vehicles, sleeping, and DMV registration dodgers. AB 516 deletes the bill's exact word. Every officer's ability to impound or boot any vehicle for the three most common reasons against nuisance vehicles. One, park more than 72 hours in same location. Two, registration outdated more than six months. Three, five parking violations. Today, these three laws help, LEOs prevent crime by using them to impound vehicles of serious criminals, thus impending their reach and mobility. Overnight sleepers are often towed under one of these laws. LEOs have many ways to tow vehicles, but LAPD officers tell us the above three laws underline 85% and 99% of their toes of nuisance vehicles. If AB 516 becomes law, please listen, this is a very important Assembly Bill, and I please, I ask all the council members, I would please like your attention. Scuffle. So people and businesses will exploit their new freedom from consequence to park for weeks in neighborhoods where they will clog roadways, bike lanes and alleys, and delay emergency vehicles. They can ignore mounting citations for serious parking violations like blocking driveways, bus and school zones, double parking, et cetera. California's tactic, tactic of living these fines against income tax is powerless because such scuffle, don't file a 540. If AB 516 passes, every California municipality's parking violation revenue will plummet, as there will be no consequences for ignoring fines. DMV registration revenues will drop. Why register if LEOs can't tow or boot you? Loss of payroll. Property and sales tax revenues as yet more upper and middle-income earners flee California. Trouble-free vehicles sleeping discourages transients from seeking housing and drug programs. Highly impacted residential parking difficulties will worsen further. Outbreaks of downtown's highly contagious rat and flea-borne diseases, diseases in residential neighborhoods. Typhus, typhoid, skin, and the list goes on. Crime will rise as career criminals retain vehicles that can't be towed. Residential crime will rise as transients explore communities they, where they now park. Residents will be intimidated from walking their communities due to overnight sleepers. Vigilantism, anyway, will be intimidated from walking their communities due to overnight sleepers. Oh, sorry. Will rise when LEOs can't safeguard every neighborhood. Greater influx of homeless seeking California's permissive laws. Widespread drops in poverty values. Political backlash at the voting booth. And let me just add within these last seconds that there is currently a city towing service option for our homeless community if they have their vehicles impounded. They can perform community service instead of paying parking citations called CAP. For those who are struggling with finances, they also have payment plans. So please consider us as well. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. All right, members of the public, we have a number of speakers. I'm going to try to get to you as soon as possible. Excuse me, no yelling from back, of the back of the chambers. Sergeants, can you go check on that, please? Nina, hold on for just a second. Scott Andrews, are you here?
Yes.
Okay, how about Sandy Andrews? How about Lisa Petrus? Lisa Petrus, you want to come up? Sir in the black shirt, did I call your name?
You did not.
Okay. Can you take a seat?
I, I, I signed in this morning.
I will call you as soon as your name comes up. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Nina.
Hi, I'm Nina Royale. I'm also with the Solentanga Neighborhood Council. This is a bad idea. It, we're burying, we're, we're digging holes to bury dirt. Obviously, it was not, it was not really thought out of the unintentional consequences that are very negative to the community. And I'm also a member of the Community Police Advisory Board, and I have talked to many police officers. They are very, very concerned about their ability to also carry out their jobs. So please, please do not support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Scott Andrews. I'm a third-generation Los Angelino. I'm honored to have an opportunity to speak before the council. This is my first time of hearing before the Los Angeles City Council. I'm a business and homeowner in Council District 12. Thank you, Greg Smith. As the largest city to be affected by the important, by this rule, I implore you to not support Assembly Bill 516. I wish to give you my quick perspective. This morning, I walked down Canoga Avenue that my business is located on. In a few short blocks, I was able to come across eight vehicles that were known to be parked weeks on end. Some have been ticketed, some have been ignored by the Department of Transportation. Many of these vehicles have debris around them, and some even have flat tires and don't have the ability to move on their own power. The vehicles tend to attract others in quick order, and there is a multiple-vehicle parking on the street for extended periods of time. Our streets are not and have never been intended to be used as long-term parking lots. They do provide temporary parking for all citizens that use, and this use allows for the community and commerce to have interaction.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Sandy Andrews.
This creates a perfect situation for a car to be broken into and also vandalized. Is that what we want as a city? I contemplated this bill equating it to property ownership. If a property owner does not pay their tax, eventually that property is seized for its debt to the community for basic services rendered that have paid for. One could potentially argue that these vehicles are paying their tax to use the street through gas that they buy, but that is not a justifiable position. If AB 516 passes, then vehicles that don't pay their tax in the form of parking violations would get a free pass to allow them to stay on the street. Why is this fair to the other citizens that have been paying these violations due to breaking the rules? These rules were created to keep our streets clean and free from obstructions that are in accordance with societal acceptances that created such laws. AB 516 would create two classes of citizens, those that decide to use our streets as parking lots and those that don't. This law would provide protections to one class of citizens that another class would not be entitled to. This is fundamentally wrong and potentially in violation of the California State Constitution.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Lisa Petrus. Let me call, let me call a couple of more speakers. Nisha Kashap, are you here? Nisha?
Yeah.
Can you want to come up, please? Nina Golsham? Is there Nina Golsham here? Great. Guillermo Barantes? Guillermo, you want to come on up? Thank you very much. Go ahead, Lisa.
Hi, Lisa Petrus, Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council. I'm here on behalf of myself. I would implore you to vote no against this. I would also ask all the council people here to pay attention to this. It's extremely important. Anybody could park an RV in front of your house and live there as long as they want. It can have expired tags. It can stay for months on end. It cannot be towed. It cannot be ticketed. This will affect every single person. And Mr. Kocorian, I appreciate you paying attention from the very beginning while other council people were on their phones and not paying attention. This is crucial to our city. I understand that homelessness is a problem, but the problem does not get solved by allowing people to break the law. Please vote no.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Nisha Kashap. I am a staff attorney at Public Counsel. Public Counsel urges the City Council to support AB 516 and vote no on these resolutions. Along with the ACLU and the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, we have submitted a letter outlining our concerns with the chief legislative analyst's report on AB 516. First, the CLA report states that AB 516 would make it impossible to tow abandoned vehicles. This is simply inaccurate. Second, the CLA report states that if AB 516 is enacted, state law will allow for towing in very narrow circumstances. This is also wrong. AB 516 does not change existing law which allows cities to tow abandoned vehicles, and if the bill passes, there will still be over 25 bases to tow a vehicle, including when vehicles are illegally parked. Finally, the CLA report omits the fact that many low-income individuals are ineligible for existing payment programs. We urge the City Council to consider our letter, as well as letters submitted by many organizations, and support AB 516.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Hold on for just a second. Are you Nina?
Yes.
Hold on for, let me call a couple of more speakers. Michael Bay, are you here? John Morder? John Morder?
Yes.
And Kurt Bershnik, are you here? Kurt? Good morning. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Nina Golsham. I'm a law clerk at Public Counsel, and I urge the City Council to support AB 516 and to vote no on this resolution. The numbers from last week's homelessness count are devastating. Over 50,000 individuals were driven into homelessness this past year. The city should be doing everything it can to prevent more people from experiencing homelessness. We know that over 700,000 Angelinos are severely rent burdened and one catastrophic event away from losing their homes. A vehicle tow which costs hundreds of dollars can be that catastrophic event. Towing people's cars only makes it more difficult for families struggling to get by, especially for the many families where a car is a necessary lifeline to work. AB 516 eliminates poverty toes that push low-income families deeper into poverty. We urge the City Council to vote no on the resolution and support the end of poverty-related toes. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good morning.
My name is Guillermo Barantes. I'm a law clerk with Public Counsel, and I urge the City Council to vote no on the resolution. I want to dispel a myth I have heard about AB 516 today. The bill does not change law enforcement's ability to remove cars in violation of parking restrictions. The bill states that law enforcement cannot tow cars that are otherwise safely, lawfully parked for violations of the 72-hour rule. AB 516 does not affect law enforcement's authority to tow cars in violation of any other parking restrictions, including meters, street cleaning, or restrictions on overnight parking in certain areas. If AB 516 is enacted, all of those parts... If AB 516 is enacted, all of those parking restrictions can still be enforced by the city. The bill is a solution to a specific problem, but it is not an end to parking rules in Los Angeles. We urge the city council to resist the misinformation and support the common sense solution of AB 516. Thank you.
Good morning, sir. What is your name?
Good morning. My name is Michael Bay. I'm a longtime resident of the San Fernando Valley. I'm a business owner. For the last year and a half, we've had to contend with RVs parked out in front of our businesses. I'm a community organizer, as well as a property owner and business owner. I'm wondering if the council would be willing to look at some of the photos that I brought here. I've had to contend with death threats, chased with a shovel, had a gun pulled on me. I've picked up needles, traipses through streets and parking lots that are just filled with dangerous people. I do understand that the homeless have rights, but this is not the way to go about it, to impede LAPD's ability to remove these vehicles. Some of the occupants are wonderful people, some of them are extremely dangerous, and I've had personal, personal contact with them, for the good and for the bad. I urge you to vote no on 516. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you be willing to look at these pictures, please?
Can you hand them to the sergeant? He'll pass them around. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Speaker.
Are you John?
Yep.
Hold on for just a second. Anthony Brosnell, are you here? Anthony? Not here. Susan Collins? Susan Collins? Hillary Pickles? Go ahead.
I'm John Morder with Ground Game LA, and I'm here in support of AB 516, which is a homelessness prevention bill, and that's how it should be viewed and talked about, especially after the count numbers came out. We should be doing absolutely everything in our power to prevent more people from ending up in tents on the street. I don't know a single unhoused person who's ever benefited from a tow. I have someone living in an RV in front of my place right now. They're welcome to stay there as long as they need until we get them into permanent housing. I work with unhoused veteran populations, many of whom stay in RVs and POV's. One of my good friends, who's a fellow veteran organizer, he was homeless for a while, lived in his car. Getting a tow can be a death sentence for these guys, guys who need extreme and intense, like, medical care. They need some kind of shelter provided while we work to get them into permanent supportive housing and into affordable housing. So vote no on this resolution.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Kurt Bershnik. I represent small businesses in the Council of District 6 area and other parts of Los Angeles. I've seen firsthand the devastating effects that RVs showing up on a commercial street can, can, can do. We've had tenants who literally go out of business. These are tax-paying tenants and tenants who have other employees. And I think it's short-sighted to, to extend the, the cycle of poverty to people that are, that are gainfully employed and trying to pay their taxes by allowing streets to be taken over in a way that they weren't designed to. Clearly, they weren't, commercial streets aren't designed to be long-term RV parking lots. We don't have the security. We don't have the, the bathroom facilities. And I think if this is to be approached, this is the wrong way to do it by diminishing law enforcement's ability to enforce the law. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Susan Collins from Sherman Oaks. I would like to strongly oppose AB 516. AB 516 protects criminals and allows illicit businesses to operate and profit by exploiting these new protections to park in residential streets and boulevards. AB 516 will make our neighborhood streets a home for the homeless, leaving our most vulnerable at risk. Since RVs will no longer be impounded or towed due to unpaid registration or tickets, there is no way to know who may be living in front of our homes or near our schools and parks. This bill is punitive to the law-abiding taxpayers and homeowners since they will be unjustly required to pay registration fees, parking violation fees that others living in the same communities while not paying any property taxes are not mandated to pay. This is an incredibly unjust and unfair bill to your constituents. State revenue will drop. Why would anyone pay for parking meters, registration fees, tickets, or toll fees if none of them are enforceable? Please stand with the residents of Los Angeles and vote no on AB 516. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are you Hillary?
Yes.
Let me just call a couple of more speakers. Ally Myers, are you here? Sarah Eller? Mariana Magaña? Mariana, are you here? And Karina Hornisku? Karina, are you here? Good morning, go ahead.
Good morning. My name is Hillary Pickles. I am a constituent of CD4. I would also like to agree with my fellow neighbors who spoke in opposition. In addition to that, I'd like to add that I have also experienced safety issues regarding the large vehicles parked on the street when it comes to make, trying to make legal turns in traffic. Visibility is greatly impaired. I've nearly been hit a couple of times. And if this bill passes, visibility issues are going to continue to increase. In addition to that, I would urge you to make sure that our zone parking remains protected. We pay a lot of money in taxes for street protections that will now be stripped away from us should this bill pass. And we, and I, we pay more money to the city for zone permits to be able to ensure that the safety on our streets and available parking is there. So I just urge you to make sure that that is not rolled into this, to protect our parking, and to vote no on AB 516. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Ally Myers. I'm with the ACLU. We are part of a group of supporters who support AB 516, and I'm going to redo a list of groups across the state that support AB 516. The ACLU of California, the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights of the San Francisco Bay Area, the Western Center on Law and Poverty, Access Women's Health Justice, Act for Women and Girls, Bay Area Community Services, Bend the Arc Jewish Action, California Low-Income Consumer Action, California Public Defenders Association, the California Voices for Progress, the Coalition on Homelessness, Equal Rights Advocates, the Legal Aid Foundation of Los Angeles, the National Association of Social Workers of California, the National Lawyers Guild of Los Angeles, Parent Voices California, Public Counsel, the Service Employees International Union of California, Tipping Point Community, Youth Alive, and Youth Justice Coalition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Eller, and I'm also with the ACLU. Low-income families cannot afford the cost of toes. A single toe can cost hundreds or even thousands of dollars. Los Angeles typically requires that individuals pay at least $300 to retrieve their car from the tow yard, while tow yards charge daily escalating storage fees for every day the car sits in their lot. Individuals must also pay any unpaid parking tickets or car registration before they can get their car back. As a result, many people simply can't afford what it costs to get their car back. 55% of Angelinos have no opportunity to save to cover an unexpected expense. The high cost of towing means that a single toe can cause a low-income individual or family to lose their car for good. This can push the family into unemployment, increased debt, and greater instability. Los Angeles should do everything possible to ensure working families get a fair shake and should not punish people who are living in poverty. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you Sarah? Are you Sarah?
No, I'm Karina.
Karina? Is Sarah Eller? Was that just you? Okay, thank you. How about Mariana Magaña? Okay. Hold on for Karina for just a second again. Connor Schaefer, are you here? Do you want to come on up? Kendrishe Ruthad, are you here? And Allison Gorham? Allison Gorham, are you here? Okay, go ahead, Karina.
Okay, I'm Karina Hornisku, and I'm representing Valjean Street between Sherman Way and Van Owen, neighboring the Nice Airport. And we are opposing the RVs being parked on our street and for long term, or I don't even know what ideas you have about them. But it's not because we don't like them. It's because pure and simple, it's dangerous for them, for us, and it's impacting our businesses. We cannot actually park our cars as employees. We cannot have our customers parking their cars, and we cannot have any deliveries because the drives are blocked and there are huge trucks, for example, Fly Away, it's there, Wolfie Trucking Company. And I have countless of pictures showing you what's happening on those business streets. So you, as a city, you have to find a different way to deal with this situation. And, you know, we have to close our businesses sometime, and we're losing revenues, and there are so many impacts that we have on our businesses that I cannot even go ahead here and not tell you. You have to think about it logically, and not just look at the plan and say, hey, they can park here. So please, find a different solution. Do you like to see the pictures?
Can you, sergeants, can you please take the pictures from our speaker? Thank you. Just hand them over to the sergeant. Next speaker.
Good morning. My name is Mariana Magaña, and I am with the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights, also known as CHIRLA. We're here to voice our support for AB 516 and oppose the resolution presented today that would establish a position of opposition by the City of Los Angeles. AB 516 is an essential piece of legislation that would prohibit local jurisdictions from towing vehicles under certain conditions by eliminating three types of poverty-related tow and leaving completely intact over two dozen existing authorizations for towing. AB 516 will not prevent law enforcement from enforcing existing practices and traffic laws, and can still conduct toes for public safety violations. Various reports have already outlined the economic and social impacts that these toes have on low-income people of color, including immigrant Angelinos. Cars are an essential lifeline to our immigrant community, whom rely on them to drive, to work, and provide for their families in the United States. As it stands, there are already a lot of unknowns that 3.5 million immigrants in LA County have to face, for some, a language barrier, lack of legal status, and cultural differences, and worrying about this should not be another reason. We support AB 516 and ask for you to oppose the resolution. Thank you.
Good morning. Your name, sir?
Connor H. Schaefer.
Go ahead.
My name is Connor H. Schaefer. I'm a clerk at Public Counsel and resident of District 10, and I am urging the city council to support AB 516. The chief legislative analyst's report states that AB 516 would, quote, "make it impossible to tow vehicles abandoned in the public right of way," end quote. This is simply false. AB 516 does not affect in any way the city's ability to deal with abandoned, wrecked, dismantled, or inoperative vehicles. There is existing state law that allows cities to tow vehicles they reasonably believe to be abandoned. AB 516 does not change this law. There is existing state law that allows cities to establish their own abandoned-vehicle ordinances. AB 516 does not change this law. AB 516 has no effect on the city's authority to tow abandoned vehicles, and if the law is enacted, cities will continue to retain the authority to tow abandoned vehicles. Thank you.
Hi, Kendrick Rustad. I'm for District 14 City Council. I'm an interior architect, and I focus on structure. The structure of a city civilization is for people to find work, work together, and live. So there should not be homeless people in a civilized world. So we're losing the, before, we need to do something before they become homeless. And the structure of a city is for businesses to operate, so they need to have the streets free and clear to be streets for cars, sidewalks, or for pedestrians. Please, keep in mind the structure of a city, and everything was fine years before. Now, since people live in their cars, I know that the city has a program where they can park in parking lots that are not being used, like churches and whatnot on different days of the week. So there is a program. If you expand that program and have a place for people to put their cars, since there is a problem now. So you're not creating losing, losing situations. Create win-win ones.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
So, thank you.
Are you Allison?
Yes, I am.
Give me just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Janice Bridge, are you here? Come on up. Melinda Cacani? Bill Pruluky? Bill, are you here? Come on up. How about Laura Soto and Sandra Soto? Can you please come on up? Go ahead, Allison.
Hi, my, excuse me. Hi, my name is Allison Gorham. I am a resident in Lake Baboa. I'm nervous. I implore you to vote no on AB 516. These RVs, which are, aren't they, first of all, recreational vehicles, not residential vehicles? There are RV camps, not RV curbs. They have the visibility when they park, like, via Ralph's Grocery Store or anywhere, like, along the street there, the visibility becomes nonexistent. You can't see turning in and out of driveways. They are hazardous in that regard. And then, I keep changing everything when I hear people talk, that these abandoned vehicles, that's just it, they're not abandoned. There are people living in them. They do have waste where it's just being dumped in alleys or just wherever they find an empty spot. It's a health hazard. It's a safety hazard. I, myself, don't even shop at the Ralph's by my, right around a quarter mile from my house anymore because of all the RVs parked there. I don't feel safe. So it's detrimental to our businesses and just to our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker. Janice?
Hello. Yes, I'm Janice Barage. I live in Lake Baboa. I have to say, it's like, I go back and forth with these issues on what we should actually do. I feel like, I feel like a lot of these solutions tend to be Band-Aids. They seem to be knee-jerk resolutions for, for what the real issue is. And I do think that maybe rather than, rather than allowing people just to park on the streets because it is detrimental to businesses, it also clogs up the, even in the residential areas where I live. But maybe it needs to be something else. I think it needs to be, parks need to be set up so that they can, and also so that the people who are in these situations that need the extra help can, can get additional services so that they can become productive members again from our, in our city. And I think that's really what all of us really want. But we also want to be protected. We also want to make sure that, that these things are being addressed rather than just knee-jerk resolutions for it. And that's what I feel like this is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Melinda Cacani. I am the supervising attorney of the Transition Age Youth Project at Public Counsel. We represent and support young people transitioning out of foster care and probation systems that have largely failed them. Imagine being minimally connected to housing resources, adults at 20 years and 364 days old. At 21, you are left to fend for yourself, aging out without a job, education, housing, food security, any sense of stability. The number of our clients living in their cars is astronomical. I can assure you that putting their, paying their registration is not even on their list of priorities. It's more like, where can I take my next shower? That the City of LA would consider opposing AB 516 is mind-blowing. This obsession with shackling people to poverty needs to stop because we already have two classes of citizens, and we need to bridge the gap. I can afford to pay my parking tickets. My clients cannot. I can afford to pay my registration. My clients cannot. Opposing 516 is forcing my clients to live off the grid.
Thank you, next. Next speaker. Are you Bill? Good morning.
Philip Pruslucki, Executive Director of Power People Organized for West Side Renewal. We support AB 516. We urge the council not to take this step today, but to consider supporting AB 516. While we're concerned with folks, so many more people ending up in homelessness, we just saw numbers that showed how, even though we're housing more people than before, we're still having even more folks on the street. We know that's because of evictions. We know that so many of our families who pay rent are rent burdened, and a tow, a registration fine, these are exactly the types of things that can lead to that one expense that breaks the camel's back, that puts folks over the edge and into homelessness. So we're not only criminalizing homelessness, but criminalizing the activity that puts[1698.28] folks into homelessness. We need to take a more compassionate approach. Thank you.
Hold on for just a second. Are you Laura?
I'm Sandra.
Uh, hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. John Besser, are you here? John? Besser, do you want to come on up? Anna Maria Garcia? Rebecca Lieb? Rebecca? And Cynthia Tidwell? Okay, go ahead. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Laura Soto and I'm from the Panorama City Neighborhood Watch. I implore you to vote no on AB 16. Our communities already have huge parking problems. Cars are already being dumped in our streets for weeks without ever seeing the owners. There are mechanic pop-up shops in our streets fixing multiple cars at a time and having no regard to our environmental well-being. People in cars are smoking weed, committing lewd acts, and drinking. However, thanks to our local law enforcement, DOT, and the 72-hour rule, we are able to minimize those major quality-of-life issues. We have, we also have low-income families in our communities, and they strictly oppose AB 516. AB 516 is not the way to help the low-income, the homeless, and our communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sandra Soto and I'm a resident of Panorama City and one of the block captains of Panorama City Neighborhood Watch. I'm here representing my community and also the communities that are low-income communities that are fed up with the quality-of-life issues in our area. We oppose this bill because we feel like we're being discriminated against and the needs of our working community continue to be ignored and neglected. Since the '70s, many middle-class people have enjoyed the benefits of having laws that were enforced and services that have been helped, that have helped them achieve a quality-of-life. However, as more minorities move into residential areas, it seems like many of the laws and services that were enforced in the past have suddenly disappeared. It's shameful that we can no longer benefit from the same laws as the generations before. This seems like an injustice. We pay taxes, we abide by the laws, yet we feel like we are being penalized for being good. We help to keep our streets clean, and we are the ones who are going around protecting our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? John?
Yes, uh, good morning. My name is John Best, and, uh, thank you for allowing the members of the community to-
John, can you get closer to the mic? We can't hear you. There you go.
Okay. Thank you for allowing the members of the community to show up today to voice their opinions on this issue that you're looking at. We may be for it or against it. Mom and dad moved my brother, my sister, and I to Panorama City in May of 1953. I still live in the same house, and I love our home, and I very much care for the appearance of Panorama City. There's been a lot of changes over the decades, but I see a, a lack of respect for, for homeowners, for the way people take care of the city and the streets, the trash, and everything that's thrown away. But there's a lot more cars and trucks on the streets now than ever before, and some families may have six, seven, or eight vehicles and several rattles on the streets, and it's hard for people to find a place to park. Um, if this bill passes, I think it's going to lead to worse conditions, so-
Thank you, John.
I would vote against this measure, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Anna Maria Garcia, and I am a resident of Panorama City, and I oppose AB 5116 because it will be, create more problems in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Are you Rebecca?
I'm Cynthia.
Are you Rebecca?
Yeah.
Good morning.
Hi, my name's Rebecca Lieb. I'm with Ground Game LA, and, um, I want to, I want to support AB 516. I want us all to think about the difference between property rights and bodily rights. And what we're talking about right now is the criminalization of poverty. And for all the people who are talking about enforcing the rule of law and all that stuff, think about what laws we enforce over others and who we're, who we're criminalizing. This is insane that we live in this, in, in one of the most liberal cities in the country and we're opposing this bill. I'm just, I'm like, aghast at all the people here who are complaining about their, their quality of life. Well, if you care so much about this, what have you done about the homelessness crisis? If you're an activist, why haven't you shown up to, to do something about the homelessness crisis directly instead of just penalizing these people?
Thank you. Are you Cynthia? Are you Cynthia?
I am Cynthia.
Okay, let me, let me call a couple of more speakers. Hold on for just a second. Darren Schweitzer? Schweitzer, are you here? Darren? Jed Periot, are you here? Jed? Molly Lambert? And Johnny Coleman? Go ahead, Cynthia.
My name is Cynthia. I'm from Canoga Park. I have a letter for the council. My husband and I are both suffering from physical and mental illnesses, including anxiety and depression, due to the policies of the city, specifically shelter-first policies only solidified by the bill under discussion. We live in a state of chronic stress because there are homeless people who are mentally ill and drug-addicted, living walking distance from my house. Friday night, I watched a man smoke crack outside my house, waited three hours for the police to arrive, then watched as he ran away. The police did not chase him, did not issue any citations or anything, and the man was back on my street later that night. The people on our streets, they need help. The last speaker was right. They do need help. This is not the way. The laws must be equally applied and without prejudice to all citizens for the benefit of the whole community. You can consider my letter a cease and desist. The policies have to stop. I've already contacted the president and HHS. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Darren?
Hi, thank you and good morning. My name is Darren Schweitzer. Uh, I'm a law clerk at Public Council, and I urge the city to support AB 5116. Uh, as detailed in a recent report, towed into debt, towing is an ineffective tool for debt collection. Cars towed for debt collection are two to six times more likely to be sold at a lien sale. And when cars are sold at a lien sale, they're typically sold for a fraction of the debt owed. The data indicates the cars are typically sold for $2,000 less than the debt owed. Thus, when, when a car is towed and sold, everyone loses. The car's owner loses the cars for good, the tow yard doesn't recoup its costs, and the city does not recover the debt that triggered the tow in the first place. Towing cars to try to collect debts is just punitive and unproductive. Towing should be reserved for removing traffic obstructions and should not be used for attempted debt collection. Thank you.
Uh, Jed?
Good morning, councilmembers. Jed Periot with the Democratic Socialists of America and the Services Not Sweeps Coalition. Um, AB 5116 is a homeless prevention bill, full stop. Isn't that what the priority should be right now in Los Angeles? Homeless prevention? Uh, it does not prevent the towing of abandoned vehicles, as has been expressed, I know that concern by, by a lot of folks here today, and probably is a concern of many of you. This is a homeless prevention bill, and in this unprecedented crisis, um, you know, a lot of folks are here angry about the fact that they have to see the poverty that we have created, that the system has created that we live under. Um, you know, there's answers to that. You know, they should be mad that we don't have rent control. They should be mad that we don't have public housing. They should be mad that healthcare is so expensive. They should be mad that wages have not kept up with rent in this city. There's a lot of things they could be mad at, but instead, they want you to criminalize people, and criminalization has never worked. LASSO will tell you that, by the way, in their report. They agree with Services Not Sweeps to remove LAPD and stop criminalizing people on our streets, to start giving them the services they need and the housing.
Hi, my name- Hi, I'm Molly Lambert. I'm a business owner from the Valley. Um, I am strongly in support of this bill. Uh, Los Angeles has become a feudal city. We live in feudalism. We have super, super rich people and people who literally cannot afford to live, and they are forced to live in their cars. They are not choosing to live in their cars, they are forced into it. Um, and we should not be criminalizing them. And the way some of you people talk about the homeless, like they're animals that you think should be put down, is disgusting. Um, you should have empathy for human beings. Uh, any of you could be unemployed at some point, any of you could lose your house. Uh, housing is not a moral thing. You do not deserve, uh, housing because you have money. You deserve housing because you're a human being. Everybody in Los Angeles deserves housing, and criminalizing people and putting them in jail is not a housing plan, and we know what you think you're doing, so it's not going to work.
Next speaker?
Good morning. Johnny Coleman with DSA, uh, here on behalf of Services Not Sweeps, No Olympics LA Coalition. Um, I have a few things I want to get to real quick. Uh, it seems like a lot of people who, and I'm obviously here in support of AB 516, uh, it seems like a lot of people here who are not in support of this are curious and, um, are really worried about crime that's happening in this city, and they traveled all the way down from the Valley to whine about crime. But if they actually cared about crime, um, they would be a lot more concerned about what's going on in these very walls and the billions of dollars that's being given away to hotel developers, one of them whom I see in the room and used to be a USC quarterback and is causing the displacement of people that we're organizing with. Um, there are over a million people in LA who are either homeless, incarcerated, or rent burdened. This will make all of that worse. Thank you.
Uh, next speaker? Chris Roth? Chris Roth, Sonia Keith? Michael Kaufman? Wayne Spindler and Eric Previn? Good morning.
Good morning, council. My name is Chris Roth. I'm with Ground Game Los Angeles and K-Town For All, as well as DSA and part of the Services Not Sweeps Coalition. I am here to strongly oppose Smith's measure to, uh, voice opposition against AB 5116. AB 5116 would, as everyone on my side has been saying, would help to ease and prevent homelessness because it is simply a step to stop the police and the city from towing people's cars when it is their last line of defense before they become homeless and living in a tent on the streets. There is a reason why all of these legal aid funds who are out here doing work to support people who are homeless and get them back into housing, they are all in strong support of AB 5116, and it is only people who are out here worried about the cleanliness of their streets that are coming out in opposition to it. What we need is services in the city, not sweeps. I strongly encourage you to support AB 5116. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Sonia Keith. I'm homelessinla.com, and I want to tell you a quick story. I have a client who is a drug addict, who is living on the streets, of a very criminal life, scrounging for money, blowing through his GR check and his cash aid. I got him into Drug Treatment Center. I talked to his family. They gave him a trailer. We were able to get him into his, this van, this trailer, which is not housing, but it's housing-adjacent, and while there, he was able to focus on his sobriety, focus on his mental health, do intensive outpatient services, was doing so much better. And last week, he had his, his trailer towed. He's been in the emergency room two times since last week, and as you know, people who frequent fly through the emergency room cost you $40,000 to $80,000 per person per year. So, while this is not an ideal solution, at least it's housing-adjacent, and for some people, it's the best they can do until we can all get together and do better.
Good morning.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Michael Kaufman. I'm a staff attorney with the ACLU of Southern California. I'm here today on behalf of a coalition of LA-based civil rights and community-based groups that strongly supports AB 5116. And I'd just like to provide a list of those organizations here to you today. It includes the ACLU of Southern California, the Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment, Asian Americans Advancing Justice Los Angeles, the Central American Resource Center, CARESUN, Coalition of Humane Immigrants Rights Los Angeles, CHERLA, Homeboy Industries, Let's Get Free LA Coalition, Public Council, the National Immigration Law Center, UCLA Labor Center, the Western Center on Law and Poverty, and the Youth Justice Center, among other organizations. The reasons why these organizations support AB 5116 is because we have members and we serve communities that have seen the devastating impacts of these kinds of poverty-based tow's. It's the unfortunate reality in Los Angeles today that many families do not have the hundreds of dollars it takes to pay parking tickets or their registration. And, and towing someone's car in those circumstances can, in some cases, remove their most valuable asset, eliminate their ability to get to work to pay their bills, and eliminate the way for their children to get to school. These are counterproductive measures, and it's simply not the case that without these tow's, the city does not have at its hands other resources to collect unpaid parking tickets and registration. There, um, somebody can face wage garnishment, a civil judgment, they can lose their license for unpaid, uh, parking tickets. All this will do is eliminate the hammer of a tow that in most cases is not going to generate any revenue and in fact will drive people deeper into poverty. So, we urge you to support AB 5116 and help make the traffic system a little bit more fair for low-income residents of Los Angeles.
Because we're mentally retarded. Okay, so now, good afternoon, criminals. Thank you for stealing all of the HHH money. Let's give them a hand. That's right. Let's give you a hand for stealing the Measure H money. You stole 671 million fucking dollars. That's why the homelessness goes up. Now, you target the people who are the victims. This is what this shit is. That's why that pasty white fuck up there just interrupts me. Do not interrupt me, please. So, what I had to do, I had to go to Sacramento. I had to lobby, and there's only two people here who tried. Sidio Harris-Dosson actually tried to solve the problem. But then you got the people in the North Valley, like Greg Smith, Monica Rodriguez, and Criminal Nury, who do what? No parking of an RV over 22 feet long from the hours of 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM. So, what you did is you created apartheid in the city of Los Angeles, and they all went downtown, all of them into Koreatown where my business is. They can't go, they're landlocked. So, Greg Smith and all his pasty white friends can go shopping over at the goddamn Ralph's, and they'd be interrupted by all the poverty. You fucking scumbags. That's what you are. And now you're going to share the love of homelessness because then you're going to have to look at it and actually do something about it. You just want to push it south of the 10 freeway. That's all you want to do. Well, no more. We got Gavin Newsom, great governor, and he's going to take a large, big legal cock, and now he's going to solve the problem. It's Greg Smith's fault. He should be arrested. He's a piece of shit.
Okay, thank you very much. Next speaker? Is Eric Previn? Eric Previn, are you here? Eric Previn is not in the room? That concludes public comment for item number 33. We're going to close public comment from, um, item 33, Madam Clerk. We've got public comment for item 39 now. Justin Grams, are you here? Sandy Skeeter? Joanna Swan? Ann Orchard? Is Ann Orchard here? Go ahead, Justin.
Uh, so this was in opposition to 516 as well. Uh, David Chu, who's championing the bill, um, is not a representative of this city or this county. He's, uh, for the Eastern District of San Francisco. Um, he has no ties to LA and no ties to any voters or residents of LA, and he should not be, uh, representing us with this bill and bringing it to your attention. Um, this is something for, for him and his constituents in San Francisco to, to decide. Next up, uh, Assemblyman Chu should not be supported in this quest that will ultimately negatively impact taxpayers of LA, giving them no recourse to assist in reporting potential criminal activity arising out of vehicles and residential neighborhoods. And last, separate from the homeless issue, this bill, if, if it becomes law, will give junk car collectors, vehicle hoarders, unlicensed and unregulated auto repair facilities, and people with no respect for our communities a free pass to trash our neighborhoods with no recourse by the DOT or law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker? Joanna? Joanna Swan and Ann? Are you, is Ann here? Okay, how about, um, Johnny Coleman?
Go ahead, Sandy. I'm Sandy Skeeter. I'm from Sound City Recording Studios in Van Nuys, in Councilwoman Martinez's district, and our, our part of the valley is highly represented here today. Lake Balboa, Panorama City, Van Nuys. We are inundated. We are begging you to help us. It's not that we're not compassionate, we are overwhelmed. There is, we, I have an iconic recording studio, home of Tom Petty, Johnny Cash, Metallica, you name it, and we have RVs parked in front of our street, and it's a health hazard. They are dumping the human waste into the LA River. We just saw a beautiful presentation from the LA River. The number-one thing you can do is create a space where these RVs can go offload the human waste. It's a public health hazard, and it's not that I'm not compassionate. I'm providing light, a security, water to the RV guy, I spray pesticides, I am providing services to the homeless. I'm help, I give them my recycling. We are compassionate to them, but we are overwhelmed. I'm in support of items 33, 39, and against AB 516.
Thank you very much. Next speaker? Joanna Swan?
Yeah.
Yeah, Joanna Swan with DSA and Services Not Sweeps Coalition. I just want to say, if you're compassionate, then you should be supporting rent protections for all tenants, the seven-hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand severely rent-burdened households in L.A. County. You should be supporting and looking into what Services Not Sweeps is, because you're right, there isn't enough resources. There aren't restrooms. There isn't fresh water. And that's why people park next to parks. And, oh, it just so happens, if you're within five hundred feet of a park right now, you're going to get a ticket. So I don't really think criminalization is going to help anyone solve homelessness. I feel like I've gone through the Looking Glass, where suddenly homeowners are the ones with the human rights issues that need their parking protected, a lack of respect for homeowners. It's not that we don't like them. We're just asking for a different way. And I just want to know, what is the different way? Because we've been going down that path of criminalization for a very long time. It's not working. And a shout-out to the maybe thousands of incarcerated people that weren't even included in the count. There's sixteen thousand and more people living in their vehicles right now. I have several neighbors who are. I also have compassion for them, and I would ask that you support 516.
Next speaker. Ann, can you give me just a second? Let me call a couple of more speakers. Johnny Coleman, are you here? Johnny Coleman, Molly Lampert? Can you please come up if I call your name? Liz Hirsch? Lydia Grant? Shelley Schwartz? Melinda Cucani? Go ahead, Ann.
Ann Rochier, I'm here with No Olympics L.A. and the Services Not Sweeps Coalition. This is a truly bizarre experience to be here exactly one week after the homeless count numbers were released, and just hearing so many of our elected leaders, including many of you, talking about how devastated you are and how we need to invest in real solutions, and we need to look at root causes. And now you're sitting here, basically considering, and I think we all know how you're going to vote, too, to basically continue investing in the same processes of criminalization and harassment and dehumanization that push people into homelessness and that keep people into homelessness. You can't talk about how, you know, you support solutions. You have to talk about and, like, think about and act supporting the people who are affected. And the people who are affected are not the people who are standing up here talking about their businesses in the valley. They're people who are rent-burdened, who are in poverty. This is disgusting.
Molly Lampert is the next speaker. Molly, are you here? Molly's not here. How about Liz Hirsch? Come on forward, and Shelley Schwartz, and Lydia Grant.
Good morning, council members. My name is Liz Hirsch. I'm a member of the Democratic Socialists of America, Los Angeles Chapter. I'm a member of the L.A. Tenants Union. I'm here with Services Not Sweeps. This is ESA. Also, by the way, it's time to put a changing table in the restrooms at City Hall. And I also just want to say that so much, so many good things have been said in support of this bill, 516, so I, there's really no need for me to repeat those things. We've heard from excellent and skilled and knowledgeable legal counsel on this, those who, you know, have expertise, and of course, those who are and are constantly hearing from those with lived experience of homelessness. So we should be trusting those voices. If you ever had an opportunity to show that you're not about just kicking people when they're down, this is your moment. If you're looking for that, by the way, you need it, here it is. It's so easy. Support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Are you Shelley?
Yes. My name is Shelley Schwartz, and I live in the West San Fernando Valley, and I'm here to ask you to vote no on AB 516. Those of us who live in the valley, I think, have been misrepresented here today. Homelessness in the valley has increased tremendously, it's increased tremendously in my district. And we're not talking about people who, you know, lost their apartments, living in vehicles. We're talking about dangerous RVs that have open propane tanks that are not drivable. When you go to our Neighborhood Watch meetings at Police Station, they inform us that the individuals in the RVs, at least in our areas, are drug dealers. They are not people down on their luck. We're asking that you vote no on it. You can't go to a lot of businesses in our area around Topanga, around Oxnard, around Nordoff, Vario, Irwin. They also, you see a lot of car accidents because we cannot see around these RVs. There's a lot of accidents, so we ask you to vote no.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Lydia Grant. Lydia, hold on for just a second. Let me call a couple of more speakers. Melinda Cucani, are you here? Melinda? Sarah E.? Sarah E. is not here. How about Sarah Eller? Sarah Eller? Ally Myers? Nisha Kashyap, are you here? Nisha? Ace Catano? Ace Catano, are you here? Lisa Petrus? Susan Collins? Go ahead, Lydia.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Nury Martinez, for addressing this issue because I think it's critical to the city. I'm Lydia Grant. I'm the first vice president of Sunland Tahunga Neighborhood Council. There's other departments that this affects besides police and D O T, which we think of, and that would be street services. First of all, they're responsible for cleaning the streets and the street resurfacing. What's going to happen when we have all these cars left on the streets and we can't get them off to resurface? Also, the sewage that gets dumped in the gutters, which sanitation is responsible for. Also, we have a problem where people may take their cars out of their garages and driveways that are broken down and now move them onto the streets. This is a huge issue. I got to tell you, many of the people here are from nonprofits today, and we understand that what they say is important, but remember that many of the nonprofits get their money from the fact that there is a homeless crisis, and we need to get the people off of the streets. That needs to be the focus. So thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity, and please vote to support these council.
Thank you, Lydia. Okay, next speaker, Melinda? Melinda? Melinda's not here. What is your name, sir? Ace? You want to come on up? Yeah, go ahead.
Good morning, folks. My name is Ace Catano. I'm a lawyer with the Public Defender's Office and a member of Ask Me Council 36, the Public Defender's Office Union. It's incredibly bizarre to me that, right after the homeless count comes out, the council would take up a motion like this, which seems dead-set at kicking the poorest when they're down. The New York Times reported last year that forty percent of Americans cannot afford a four-hundred-dollar emergency expense. The people who are affected by AB 516 aren't, it's not me. I can afford my parking tickets when I get them. It's not you. You can afford your parking tickets when you get them. The people that are harmed by these practices, by these towing, are the most vulnerable, who are already in situations where they can run the risk of falling into homelessness, being unable to cover their rent, losing jobs, being unable to afford, to take their kids to school because of a tow. The council should absolutely support AB 516 and protect the most vulnerable.
What is your name, ma'am?
Lisa Petrus, Sherman Oaks. The insinuations that somehow we're coming in from the valley and have no sympathy for anybody is ridiculous. I have to pay my smog fee every year, my 2014 minivan that's, I'm not rolling in the dough, but I also don't want RVs parked in front of my house and people living in them. I have sympathy for the homeless. I work tirelessly with the Sherman Oaks Neighborhood Council and support affordable housing, and have and will continue to do so. But this is not the way to solve the problem. Breaking the law is not the way to solve the problem. You have to pay for your tags for your car. I'm sixty years old. I have never been towed. I don't get parking tickets. I don't get speeding tickets because I obey the law, and that should count for something. Make more parking lots for housing so people can put their RVs in a safe situation with porta-potties and services for the homeless. But inundating people's small businesses and their homes is not the answer.
Thank you. Next speaker. What is your name, ma'am? Did I call your name?
Nisha Kashyap, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Once again, Nisha Kashyap, Staff Attorney at Public Counsel. I want to take this time to tell a story about a client who is emblematic of the ways that a poverty-related tow can put someone at risk of homelessness. One of Public Counsel's clients, Rachel, was a twenty-year-old foster youth who was living on a small monthly stipend of foster care benefits and income from a part-time job. Rachel relied on her car to get to school and to work. Rachel's car was towed because of unpaid parking tickets, and to get her car back, Rachel would have had to pay thirteen hundred dollars to reclaim the car. Because Rachel, a twenty-year-old foster youth struggling to support herself, did not have thirteen hundred dollars, she lost her car and therefore her transportation to work and school. Rachel's story is emblematic of the devastating harms of debt collection tows on young adults who have no choice but to support themselves. We urge the council to vote no on this resolution and support efforts to end the burden of poverty-related tows on foster youth like Rachel.
Hi again, I'm Susan Collins from Sherman Oaks. Again, I'd like to strongly voice my opposition to AB 516. The fact that these people are saying that we're trying to criminalize poverty is absurd. The reality is, is when you say, well, they can't afford to pay their registration, so it's unfair to tow them. If I can't afford to pay my property taxes, you're going to, somebody's going to take my house. If I don't pay my mortgage, they're going to take my house. It's just that simple, and those are facts of life. If it isn't for the homeowners, the business owners, and the people that pay in to provide the services for the people that they propose that they want to help, then what? The truth is, is that I have family members, I have friends, and I've seen businesses, all of which are leaving the state of California at an alarming number. When those tax dollars and those revenues are gone, who then funds the programs to help the people that they're here to help? They need our money. That's the reality. The truth is, is that whether they like it or not, things cost money. My house, I have to pay my property taxes. Their programs cost money. That money comes from our tax dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speakers. This will be the last three speakers for this item. Madam Clerk, we're going to close the public speaker comment section of item thirty-nine. Bill Perlucci, are you still here? Bill? It's not here. What about Jester Suarez? Jester, are you here? And Arnold Sachs. And that concludes our speakers for item thirty-nine. Good morning.
Good morning, City Council. I seem to be happy to be here. I'm with number thirteen. Shout-out. There's a lot of homeless people. I feel like I'm living in the movie Shrek. It's pretty disturbing. They're good people, though. They just want jobs, and they just want housing, public housing. Stop giving the money to all the rich folks, the folks who are the haves. Give it to the have-nots. Give it to the people who need it. Otherwise, the drugs are going to come through, the Mexicans are going to come over from down south of the border, and we're going to have DEA running up in the city, and we don't want that. We just want food, housing, jobs. Where my father comes from in Colombia, if we have a right to have a job there, we should have a right to have a job here, too. I'm a citizen. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next speaker. Arnold Sachs, are you speaking on this item?
I will speak on this item, Madam, yes, I will. Yes, thank you. Good morning. It's the morning. For the record, Arnold Roth Sachs. So I know you're speaking on item thirty-nine, but item thirty-eight refers to safe parking at community colleges. So my suggestion might be you consider item thirty-eight first, safe parking at community colleges.
You need to speak on item thirty-nine, sir.
Ma'am, pay attention, please.
No, I'm paying attention. I'm asking you, please speak to the item.
Thirty-eight, so, okay, so we'll do this way. Why don't you do safe parking at community colleges? There's an idea for you. How about that, Madam Chair? How's that sound? I mean, maybe you might consider that on your agenda sometime, safe parking at community colleges, even schools. How about city property? You might consider that. Yes, people are suffering, they're suffering all over the city. What is the health of the city, by the way? The city council has an opinion on what the health of the city is? I went to a health commission meeting last night. I was sick to my stomach. What do you think? Consider that.
Okay, that concludes comments on item thirty-nine. Mr. Smith? Do you want to make comments? These two items are now before us. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. The number of things that have been said, I think, need to be addressed, and first of all, a number of people have said, these things that are in the bill are not in the bill. You're saying that the seventy-two-hour parking restriction is not in the bill. You're saying we don't need the tow, it's not in the bill. Yet we've had entrees from the author of the bill, Assemblyman Chu, to take some of those or modify some of those things that you're saying aren't in the bill. They're in the bill, folks. So that's what we're here to talk about today, the effects of AB 516 to the city of Los Angeles. Now, I'd point out that this legislation has existed in this city for decades, long before homelessness was ever discussed. These have been on the books. Why? To bring order to communities, to take off the streets people's trash that they leave called cars, that they leave on the streets for weeks with flat tires and spiders growing underneath them. Those things were to be removed. This never was about poverty. It may have morphed into that issue, but let me explain that to you, folks. First of all, nothing being poor makes you break the law where you park. There are options, and you need to find them. It is our responsibility as a city to provide parking, and we have done that in numerous places, and we're doing more. I approved just last week a project in my district for forty homeless people to park in a church overnight. These are the kind of things we should be doing as a city. We cannot throw the baby out with a wash, though. AB 516 removes all ability to enforce any parking restrictions. Is that what you want in your city? I don't think, you know, there's thirty-six thousand homeless people in our city, and God bless them, we're doing what we can. Some people vilignize this council. These people sitting here today, and I'm new to this council, kind of. These people have been working on this for years. When I came to the council fifteen years ago, our budget was ten million dollars for homeless. Today, it's over four hundred million dollars. Six hundred million dollars for housing. If you think these people don't care, you are misinvised. You are wrong. They care passionately, and they're working every single day to find solutions to these issues. But for us to take away our ability, as a city, to tow away vehicles that are violating the law is really destroying our ability to keep our communities clean and safe. We care about those thirty-six thousand people, but we also have four million other people we care about, too, and they have to have a voice. We need to protect our neighborhoods. We need to protect our business district. At the same time, we must find ways to help those people. We have the ability in this council today to change our municipal ordinances that says, if we want to say to those people who believe they are being towed for poverty reasons or economic reasons, that we have the ability to waive those fees. It's our ability to do that. So if you really want to do that, folks, let's come up with an ordinance that says if you can prove you're homeless or disadvantaged in such a way that you receive a ticket and you really can't pay it, we can waive those fees. We don't need to charge them.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we do. There are also programs for people that can pay a little bit. There are ways for them to pay partial. There's a lot of ways for these people to be treated with respect, and yet they need to treat everybody else with respect. And so it is our duty to do that. 516 doesn't solve any of the problems. It makes it worse. It makes it worse for cities all over the state of California, and that's why the cities are lining up one by one throughout the state of California to oppose this bill. The League of Cities opposes it. L.A. County just came out in opposition. Neighboring cities all around us are opposing it. L.A., as the leader of the state, really, it's the biggest city in the state, needs to stand up and say, we don't want this bill. Mr. Chu, if you want to amend it, show us those amendments. But in the meantime, we say no. We must say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Hold on for just a second. I'm going to ask the members of the, I'm going to ask the members of the public, please. We have a presentation before us. There's a number of members on the queue, but I actually would like to bring the departments forward to the table, members of the LAPD, L A D O T, and the CLA's office. Can you please come forward? Are they still here? I believe a number of members have questions, and I would like for you to give an overall presentation before we get into questions from our members. Is Deputy Chief Blake Chow still here? Hello, good morning.
Good morning, council members. Joshua Drake from the CLA's office.
Who wants to kick us off?
I'll start.
Can you move the, the mic forward, 'cause, there you go.
Before user report from the Chief Legislative Analyst Office recommending that the council adopt the resolution from Councilmember Smith and Buscagno to oppose AB 516. AB 516 would limit the ability of the city to tow in three specific circumstances, where a vehicle has five or more unpaid parking tickets, instance where a vehicle's been left in the public right-of-way for 72 hours or more, and instances where a vehicle's registration has been expired for six months or more. The departments can answer any questions about the impacts that they would see if this bill was passed.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, or good morning, it's still morning.
Or good morning. We are here to support the motions in opposition of AB 516 on behalf of the Police Department. I just wanted to kinda go over a couple of issues from our perspective. Number one, we believe that this would be, create, the passage of this bill would create a significant negative impact on the communities that we serve, mainly in the ability of our senior lead officers and our area captains to address some of the quality of life issues that have a tendency to plague some of the neighborhoods in our, in our community. The quality of life issue for us is huge. You could imagine a plethora of vehicles in the street that we would have no tool left to actually impact that and, and help the community improve the quality of life in their neighborhood. Secondly is, again, as I mentioned, the quality of life, a huge concern for community members, probably one of the biggest, one of the biggest issues that we have with our community members when they reach out to our area captains. In this situation, we, we would see an increase in abandoned vehicles, an increase in the trash and waste that is associated with the vehicles that are on the street that are not moved. We have, we would have issues of street cleaning, which we know, you know, is important to keeping the neighborhoods clean and safe, as well as sanitation issues around vehicles that we, again, would have, we have no tool to remove from the streets. The 72-hour part restriction, as well as the, the parking citation number of five and over, and the, the registration over six months are three of the big tools that we use to help our community members keep their neighborhoods' quality of life up. The other issue that we would have concerns with are auto shops and the prolifer, the proliferation of being able to store vehicles outside of their property in neighborhoods without having a ramification and us to be able to remove those vehicles. And you could also conceive of an individual that would, in the neighborhood, that would decide that he wanted to buy 20 vehicles and store them in the street, we would, again, have no tool to impact that. Thirdly is our hit-and-run. We have approximately, in 2019 so far, 10,000 hit-and-runs in the city of Los Angeles. The records that are with the DMV about registered owners are vital to our ability to, to identify individuals that own vehicles that are involved in hit-and-runs, and also start our investigation. So if we enter a situation where there's no ramification for not paying a registration over six months, we're gonna lose accuracy in our ability to, to kinda go back and run DMV records to find out who owns vehicles. And of course, and then there's, um, crime, abandoned vehicles have a tendency to be targets of crime in vandalism. The vehicles become stripped, they become like focal points for other types of activity that, um, that draw criminals into neighborhoods, and we have the ability, right now, to remove those anchor points to ensure that, again, the crime and the quality of life in the neighborhoods is, um, is maintained. Just to wrap it up, we also have, um, letters from the California Police Chiefs Association, the City of Lynnwood, and League of Cities, also opposing the Assembly Bill. Thank you.
DOT is also opposed to this bill.
Can you get the microphone closer to you?
Is that better? Okay, DOT is also opposed to this bill, in the sense, uh, most of the reason that LAPD has just outlined specifically for DOT, it's important to note that, on average, going back over the last three years, we receive approximately 120,000 complaints for abandoned vehicles alone, of which, less than 6% are actually ever impounded. So the law itself works as a, a great deterrent to ensure vehicles are moving, not only for the purpose of crime suppression or for the street cleaning, it also, uh, helps promote uh, turnover for commerce and whatnot in the business districts. So it's an important, uh, tool for us. As far as the specifics to, uh, impounding for SCOF laws, the department has taken on in, uh, 2017, a self-release boot program, which essentially has eliminated the need to impound for SCOF laws, it essentially allows them the ability to contact a representative and make arrangements for payments to have their vehicle released by themselves and then return the device. So the department has taken great steps to, um, be considerate of the, the fees as far as it relates to the SCOF laws, and it is critical to note that, going back to the abandon, 94% of all complaints we received are resolved simply by the owner moving the vehicle. And while the law stipulates 72 hours, the reality is, with the high volume of complaints received, on average, the average complaint is approximately, uh, resolved within 10 days. So these, there is no immediate threat to an individual on the street, all they need to do is comply with the law.
Thank you. Did you wanna add anything else?
Yes. Ken Huston with LADOT. I want to point out that the city of Los Angeles is actually a leader among municipalities when it comes to helping the homeless and the low-income pay their parking citations. So the city of LA was the first to develop a community assistance parking program whereby we have homeless individuals that are able to enroll and pay their citations through doing community service or enrolling in a homeless service program. This program has been widely successful. Just yesterday, we're presenting at an international parking forum because there's so much interest among other cities, not just in the state of California, but across the nation. We also have, we worked very closely with Assemblymember Lackey and the city of San Francisco to help modify legislation to create a payment plan for low-income individuals so that they can have 18 months to pay off those citations. And we're taking it a step further. LADOT is in the process of right, right now, creating a payment plan for those that have citations above 300. The state law says 300 or less, we're creating something for above 300 to, again, create a payment plan over 18 months. So we're very committed to helping the low-income and the homeless individuals, and of course, we're open to new ideas, but I think this legislation is fraught with issues, and I think it could be addressed in a different way through a different California Vehicle Code section. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Members, there are a couple, there's a few of you on the queue. Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for allowing all the public comment and, and the testimony on this. I think it was an important issue to, to, to sort of air out, particularly at this time. Um, you know, I should note that I think we're now discussing this issue longer than we have discussed the concept of shared housing, or longer than we have discussed eviction defense measures in this body. Uh, and I think we need to pay as much attention to those things that prevent homelessness. Like many of the, the sort of homeless flashpoint issues that we get, this is, I think, an issue where, uh, the, the scope of the debate exceeds the reach of the actual issue. Uh, I've heard a number of people testify here today who seem to think that, uh, if Los Angeles defeats this bill in Sacramento, RVs will disappear from the streets of Los Angeles, and we will not have a problem with people, uh, spilling sewage from RVs. That ain't gonna happen. Uh, and I have heard in the public debate from people who have, uh, seemed to indicate that, um, if we prevail and this bill is defeated in Sacramento, that RVs around Los Angeles and people living in their vehicles will be impounded en masse. That is also not going to happen. Right now, I know that there is, in my district anyway, from what I know, from people who complain to the office, we generally don't tow RVs. One, the, the towing companies don't want to do it, they're reluctant to do it, and they're refusing to do it in many cases. And two, we also don't tow vehicles when, when people are in them. Is that correct? Okay. So, I, to me, there's two separate issues here. I, I fundamentally agree that we should not be towing a vehicle for unpaid tickets or for unpaid registration, 'cause I think that is a financial hardship issue. And while I'm sure there is some, you know, a few jerks in, in Alexis who get a lot of tickets and just refuse to pay them because they think they're, 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 they're hot stuff, my guess is that most people who have a collection of unpaid tickets are doing so because they can't afford to pay them. And it's not 'cause they're trying to break the law, it's because they were trying to drop the kid off at school, and they just missed the, the, the parking enforcement officer by three minutes. And for them, that's the difference between being able to buy the kid a new pair of shoes or not. And, and so, I'm, I'm okay with legislation that says, don't, uh, impound a car for unpaid tickets or unpaid registration. And you seem to indicate that, was it, 94% of the towing is because of, uh, people being parked in, in, in the same place too long?
The 94% was related to, of all the abandoned complaints or, or stored vehicles on the street, only 6% actually result in impound.
Only 6%? Okay. They, they were adjusted by, by just moving the car. That, we've heard back and forth on this, that if, if this bill passes, you will have no ability to, to deal with abandoned vehicles. And I'm, I'm sensitive to the issue of local control. I have a lot of vehicles that park near LAX, people who go out of town for two weeks and will just park there. It's not a, 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 a poverty thing, they just don't wanna pay the parking at LAX, and they can't find somebody to drop them off there. And so, you wanna be able to deal with that. Th- this specifies three things, for, for the tickets, the registration, and for the 72 hours. What other criteria can you tow a vehicle based on?
There are numerous other criteria to impound vehicles, however, it's important to note that if a vehicle is parked in an, an area that has no other restrictions and is not a safety hazard, or does not meet the, the standards such as what's called a public hazard, missing an engine, wheels, or whatnot, it is not immediately towable or can be enforced as such. So, that is the mass majority of the complaints we receive. They're essentially vehicles being stored on the street.
If the author struck from this bill, the prohibition on us enforcing the 72-hour thing, would that restore most of your ability?
I think that would have to be researched. I, I, I'm not confident in saying essentially yes or no.
Okay. Um, and, and my, my feeling, colleagues, and I'm not sure what the sense of the body is, that if, if this bill allowed us to do towing for violating the 72 hours in one place, I'd be okay with it. I'm not okay with the bill if it includes the, the parking tickets and the registration. I don't know if the author's willing to, to, to make that amendment, or if we can do an opposing less amended, I'm not sure. But if, I would make that motion to, to make it just about.
As far as I know, Mr. Bonin, he is not willing to do that. Next speaker, Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you. I appreciate a lot of what you said, especially the beginning about, we need to focus on shared housing and some of the other critical solutions for homelessness, but this, so I, I rise in support of this motion and in opposition to AB 516. The 72-hour rule is very real, and we have it for, as you mentioned, a lot of reasons, mobility for our city, um, there are real impacts. And, and even the car registration. I'm, um, there is an important safety reason why we have cars registered, and I'm a little concerned that the solution of the state is to tell us not to enforce this. You know, last year, we passed a motion, a motion that I introduced, that called upon the state to work with us and to develop programs, and I'll read it here exactly, um, you know, actions that would require the Department of Motor Vehicles to provide supplementary services to the safe parking program and other related. So we talked about having the Department of Motor Vehicles reduce the price of registration. Yes, it is burdensome for someone to pay registration for a vehicle, but the solution for that is for the state to come out and provide subsidies or free registration. Uh, that would be an appropriate state solution. Telling us just not to enforce it is not an appropriate state solution. That's just making us live in a more dangerous environment. There are things that the state can and should do with regard to that, and similarly, things that we do. You mentioned, uh, the Community Assistance Partnership Program, where we reduce or lower the fees of, of a various tickets. That's an appropriate solution for us to make sure that folks who are receiving these tickets, who are homeless and are, are down on their luck, that we have something to help them with, but not to just throw our rules aside. So, again, I, I rise in strong support of this motion in opposition to AB 516, and I call upon, again, the state to look at our, our motion from last year and to work with us to provide free registration for homeless folks, to work with us to expedite some of the, uh, issues around registration and other, uh, other issues that people have to pay for their car, because that would truly help us help people who are in need.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Ms. Rodriguez, followed by Mr. Harris-Dawson.
Thank you, Madam President, and, uh, you know, I joined Mr. Blumenfield in opposition of AB 516, and I know many of my colleagues, Mr. Smith included. My biggest frustration is, right now, we in the city of Los Angeles can't even control our speed limits because it's regulated by the state. And so, right now, in, in addition to that, they're trying to add on our ability to do enforcement on our streets, and that is not a solution to a crisis that we're dealing with right now. If Sacramento wants to be helpful in addressing the challenges that we are facing on our streets, and making sure that the municipalities that are not contributing to the solutions in the same way that the city of Los Angeles is, that they look to help implement programs that are gonna actually solve this crisis. You know, Mr. Harris-Dawson put forward an incredible pilot that we are looking forward to launching, uh, sh, very shortly, eminently, to help assure that we are helping these families that need the financial resources and the support to get out from under the burden of some of the citations that they might be currently experiencing. That is an actual solution to a problem that these families are facing, not to restrict our ability to do enforcement on our streets. And I wish we would hear that kind of response from Sacramento, as opposed to this type of legislation that would inhibit our ability to maintain our own outcomes here in Los Angeles. Uh, Mr. Harris-Dawson, I think you and I, uh, we discussed this, I would love to co-present a motion with you in asking Sacramento to actually look at the pilot that we are launching here in Los Angeles and fund that program in exchange for the elimination of the proposal of AB 516. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Mr. Harris-Dawson, followed by Mr. Gakkorian.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, and thank you, Councilmember Rodriguez, and, and all the members that have made comments, and always very grateful to folks who take time out of their day to come to, uh, 200 North Spring Street to participate in the important public debates of our day. Um, and, you know, I, I would just ask that we all resist putting each other in boxes. It doesn't help any of us, and it doesn't move the conversation forward. Uh, that being said, I both understand the need to manage our streets and manage the vehicles on our streets. Many of our neighborhoods, many of the neighborhoods in, in my district and around the city are starved for parking in the right-of-way, to begin with. So the idea that you would just stop enforcing the 72-hour hold is completely unconscionable. The, 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 and I, and I would also say, a lot of times towing isn't to collect a debt, it's actually just to free up space, 'cause we have very, very limited, uh, space. That being said, this idea that we impose a monetary penalty on people that we know don't have money just seems to be among the silliest things that we do. Uh, it's, it's, uh, I'm a little bit agitated this morning because, uh, as Councilwoman Rodriguez pointed out, we actually have discovered a solution here in the city of Los Angeles that this, that we're funding with LA City taxpayer dollars that the state is not funding, and it's called the Promise Act. It's an app that lets people enter their parking violation. That app searches the CES database, so if they're homeless, they'll be in that database. It searches the earned income tax credit database, so if you're low-income enough to apply for the earned inc, to, uh, qualify for the earned income tax credit, your name will come up. It automatically gives you the discount and breaks that the county of Los Angeles allows people to get, and it puts you on a payment program based on your income. So if what you can afford is $5 a month, it puts you on a payment plan, so you don't accrue penalties that are gonna result in towing, and you don't get a failure to appear for showing up to court, which, by the way, is the number-one reason LAPD puts people in jail, is failure to appear. So, this is a solution that actually helps poor people and targets the people that it's intended to help, as opposed to making a broad sweeping law that makes it impossible for cities to manage their sweeps, their streets. And so, we've put forward an amendment to ask the author of this bill to put forward a bill that funds this program for the city of Los Angeles and for anybody else that wants it, so you can actually help the people that this bill claims to wanna help.
Thank you, Mr. Harris-Dawson. Next speaker is Mr. Gakkorian, followed by Mr. Price.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and, uh, thank you, Mr. Bonin and Mr. Harris-Dawson, for your initial comments, sort of framing this issue and the debate around homelessness, which we saw, uh, at great length today. Um, and I think that it's important that, um, all of us here, no matter how you feel about this bill, understand that virtually 100% of people in Los Angeles, in all parts of Los Angeles, recognize that homelessness is a crisis that needs to be solved. And no matter where you are on this bill, I don't think anyone's gonna find disagreement on that issue. And so, this idea of blaming, uh, other people and pointing to other parts of town, it's just wrong. We can't afford, uh, to not be together in solving this crisis, for the sake of the homeless individuals who reside in Los Angeles, and for the sake of the communities in which they are residing. We have to be together on this. But, so that being said, and I appreciate the passion that everyone brought to this debate, that being said, let's be clear, this bill has nothing whatsoever to do with homelessness.
homelessness, nothing whatsoever. There is not a word in this bill that limits its impact to homeless people, to people who are poor, to people who can't afford to pay their fines, to people who can't afford their registration, nor even to individuals. This bill simply limits the latitude that the City of Los Angeles and other cities have to act in the best interest of the people of the city. And I was a member of the state legislature, a number of other of my colleagues here were members of the state legislature, and we know very well that the simple, easiest thing that a state legislator can do is introduce a bill telling local governments what they can't do. And that is not a solution to anything. That does not address the problems that we heard today about auto shops and car sales and other commercial uses of our streets by people who aren't paying registration, who are leaving their cars on the streets, impacting all of our neighborhoods, not homeless people, businesses that are filling our streets with those cars, which we would be helpless to be able to address if this bill were to pass. This bill would, Mr. Blumenfield, spend a great deal of time working on trying to stop mobile billboards in the city, as did I when we were here. So, what's to stop now our streets from being filled with more, you know, topless-made vans and all the other things that we see now, you know, if we can't tow cars away because they haven't been moved for 72 hours? There's nothing in this bill that gives us any ability to address the people who are perfectly capable of paying these fines, paying their registration, but they choose to be scofflaws instead. There is nothing in this bill that makes any differentiation on ability to pay. So, to my colleagues' points, Mr. Blumenfield raised it, a few others have raised it, there's some things that the state could do that would be very helpful for us in addressing this problem. They could set up a fund to pay for impound fees for people who are in need to retrieve their cars. They could offer to fund our safe parking programs, like the one I started in my district on city-owned property, so that people could park safely and not be put out on the street. They could fund effective eviction prevention programs to keep people from getting homeless in the first place. They could lower car registration fees or give subsidies to poor people in need. They could reduce late fees or create payment plans for people who can't afford to pay their registration. They could provide free transit to people who are in need. They could fund Mr. Harris-Dawson's pilot program and expand it. They could do any number of steps that they've chosen not to do, and instead, they choose simply to tell cities what you cannot do in trying to address the crisis that we're facing right now, the crisis that we're facing. So, and Mr. Smith raised a few points about tickets as well, surplus tickets. The city attorney's office already runs ticket clinics. In my Homeless Connect days, which I've had, you know, regularly since the day I got into this office, we've had the city attorney there at Homeless Connect Days, helping people to resolve their delinquent tickets so that their cars don't get towed away. So, we're already doing as much as we can do, Sacramento. How about a little help for the people in Los Angeles? I urge you to support this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. I too wanted to just join my colleagues in support of Ms. Martinez's motion. Certainly, I think it's important that we move forward with compassion and understanding, but our streets are public property, and so we have to do all we can to address the public health hazards that frequently come with vehicles just being out there. And it's not just campers, you know, as was mentioned, individuals use the streets as a sales lot, car sales, new and used sales. And so, it's just really a situation that has to be addressed, and it's not fair to handcuff the ability of local government on the ground to address these issues. Like other areas, we've instituted a safe parking program, certainly trying to be sensitive and creative, but we need to be doing more, and we need some more help from the state to make that happen. And so, I just applaud my colleagues for being so adamant on this issue. Certainly, we are sensitive, we are concerned, we are aware of the impact that these policies have on our homeless, but this program is not going to solve our homeless issue. It's not going to solve it. And so, we've got to be smart, I think we've got to be creative, we've got to be flexible, but we have to come up with some more ideas and some more support from the state to make this happen. Thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Mr. President, Mr. Smith, thank you very much for bringing this, introducing this resolution here this morning. I know it's very controversial, I heard all the speakers, but I really am compelled to speak up for my district. I know a lot of you came from different parts of my district, but the majority of the people that I represent unfortunately are not here. They're not here because they're working, because they wake up at 5:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, get in their vehicles, and work a 10-, 11-hour shift. They're not here because a lot of them are single moms with three kids who are barely able to make ends meet because they hold two jobs. They're not here because unfortunately, they don't have babysitters. They're not here because they're trying to figure out how to get by every single day, just like the rest of us. You know, members, I sometimes scratch my head and I ask, what is Sacramento doing? So much of what's being dictated in Sacramento, they are completely out of touch with reality. They're not the ones who receive the complaints, they're not the ones who get the angry phone calls and the frustration that we see all across our city because we can't seem to solve this issue. They're not the ones who people are angry at, but yet, they want to tell the City of Los Angeles and the rest of us how to govern. We govern the City of Los Angeles, not Sacramento. And this bill will only take away our local control to be able to figure out how to really help poor people. I don't have to read in a textbook what it feels to be poor. I have to just look down the street and see how people are struggling every single day. If you want to help poor people, Sacramento, pay them a decent wage. Make sure that people have the protection to not get evicted out of their apartments or out of their rental, stable apartment, and make sure that they're able to make their mortgage every single month. That's how you help poor people. You make sure they have the infrastructure to be able to sustain their families. This bill does none of that. This bill takes away our local control to be able to govern. Members, if we have to continue to send a message to Sacramento every single time they come up with a ridiculous bill to take our local control, we have to stand up and say, what are you going to do to provide the funds to keep poor people from becoming even in dire need? Members, we need to do what's right, we need to support Mr. Smith. Thank you, sir, for, I know it's tough, I know it's tough to hear the criticism, but we all have to stand up for the rest of the communities that are heavily being impacted every single day by this growing crisis that this bill does nothing to solve. Thank you.
Mr. Ruh.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I don't want to belabor this fact, everything that's been said has already been said, and I agree with both sides of the issue, and I really appreciate what Marquis Harris-Dawson stated, what Councilwoman Norrie Martinez stated, but I think Councilmember Bonin pretty much said everything I wanted to say. And especially in my district, especially with 72 hours, I mean, I've been trying to work with the Department of Transportation to see what we could do to really, truly make it a 72-hour and enforce it at that. So, but I see both sides of the argument, and I wanted to introduce a maybe-friendly amendment, if it is accepted as that, but oppose unless amended to encourage turnover on public streets and incentivize compliance with registration and parking ticket payments while minimizing practices that exacerbate poverty and increase homelessness. Because I think a lot of ideas were presented here, so I was hoping that we sent it, we let Sacramento know that we understand the intent, but right now, it doesn't do that. So, unless they change it to do a lot of the things that we talked about, we oppose.
Do you have a second, Mr. Ruh?
So, it would say, oppose unless amended to encourage turnover on public streets and incentivize compliance with registration and parking ticket payments while minimizing practices that exacerbate poverty and increase homelessness. I mean, I don't mind better words than that, I was trying to distill what was said.
There is no second. Thank you, Mr. Ruh. Any other members wishing to speak? If not, I'm going to call. The question is, go ahead and vote on these two items that are before us. Let's go ahead.
Okay, Madam President, the first item would be item number 33, and that, an amending motion, 33A, has been posted and circulated for everyone's consideration, so that would be 33 as amended.
As amended, that, those items are now before us. Mr. S- Go ahead and open the roll. Mr. Sadio, did you wish to speak? You have not pressed your button, sir, so I could not tell if you want to speak or not. Okay, if you wish to speak, go ahead.
It's not, I'm sorry, it's not functioning.
Okay, it's okay.
Okay, great. Members, I appreciate the very robust conversation, and I agree with all that, that there's no point in us trying to vilify each other as we come here with very legitimate concerns and issues that we want to address. I want to note that, though, we always have to look at both the laws. Laws are either just, or some are unjust, and if they're unjust laws, then we understand why, in many instances, people don't comply with the laws. We have to ask the question, are there, is our capacity to comply with these laws? And as the only person on this floor who wrote a bill to terminate unjust towing in the legislature, signed by Governor Brown, I think it's important to look deeper into the adverse impact. And so, the concerns that are raised by many of the advocates that there's an adverse impact are legitimate concerns and have to be addressed. At the same time, all of us represent communities that are all struggling with this crisis, and there are concerns that are being raised by many of the members of our community that are legitimate. They're very, very legitimate, and I believe that all of us individually are best prepared to address those concerns. And so, one of the challenges is, people leave San Francisco as Board of Supervisors addressing local concerns, they go to Sacramento, and they offer a solution for the entire state, and it doesn't work. It doesn't work. What they can fix and be concerned about in downtown San Francisco has nothing to do with the upper-north part of the State of California. And in the Central Valley, people think they're crazy, and for us in Los Angeles, we simply think they're overreaching. And down in the San Diego and the OC, and San Diego County, they don't understand what they're talking about because they have other concerns. And so, in many instances, there is this overreach that takes place in Sacramento, and we know that because all of us were involved in that. There are some things statewide that Sacramento could do. So, one would be to fund SB 5. I spoke to Jim Bill, Senator Jim Bill, last week. He would love for us to support SB 5. It will fund affordable housing, and we need to do that. And so, we need to stop talking about the adverse impacts of certain legislation and really focus on the real problem. If we want to talk about homelessness, let's talk about SB 5, and let's talk about Sacramento funding the resources needed so that we can build the affordability. That's the challenge that confronts us. We could ask Sacramento to open up all the public restrooms and fund them. There was a recent report about how costly it is to open up restrooms. We know the cost if we don't, but what if Sacramento just opened up all the, there's a state building right down the street, just opened it up for the purposes of people to come and go and to use the restroom? They could do that, and they could fund that. They could pay the registration of everybody, or waive it, or come up with some plan. They could fund and cover the expirations of all the covenants that exist for affordability today. I'm sitting here in this conversation but distracted because we're working on trying to save 120 units of housing in Chinatown, and how to fund the expiration of a covenant. Sacramento could help and simply say, we will cover that. They have the surplus, the infrastructure's built, the tenants are already there, it's stability in the community, and they could do that. This is a, it's the wrong solution, looking at a legitimate, but the wrong problem that it's trying to solve. And so, I concur with all of my colleagues in noting that this question is a question for us in terms of local control to address it with the specificity that it requires, with the resources that it requires. If the state wants to help us, then give us the resources. It's the only thing that's different between the state and the county and the city, is that the state has robust resources, they have a surplus that you cannot imagine. And having served in times of surpluses, that's the time to use them for one-time spending, and we could use that, those resources now. This is not a solution to any of those problems. There was a time when immigrants in the city were having their cars taken from them, and the city was raising money, and they were being discriminated against. Many of the voices we heard today, passionate and clear about the adverse impact, were silent during that time period. There was a bill in this body, Jack Weiss was the chair of committee, never saw the light of day. And so, I understand that. Hundreds of millions of dollars were profited at the expense of unlicensed motorists. And in that instance, we had to change the law, because these motorists could not comply with the law. So, let's do what we learned from that. Let's enable people to comply with the law. If it's a fiscal challenge, if it's a financial challenge for people to comply with the law, then let's enable them to do that with those resources. And if it's a policy question, then let's enable them to do that with a policy change. This does neither. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sadio. All right, members, we're prepared to vote. Let's go ahead and vote on item 33 as amended. Let's open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes, 1 no.
Go ahead and vote on item 39. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and move on to item 16. Mr. Blumenfield, did you want to speak on item 16, sir?
Ms. Garcia here. I know we're rushing on time, and she came before the committee and wowed us all about her reappointment, and I just wanted to urge us to reappoint her today, as she has been a great commissioner so far, and we know that she's going to continue in that tradition. She's been focused on beautifying the city, working with OCB, and doing wonderful work, and I know she's got some family members here, and we appreciate all you do, and I urge and I vote.
Thank you very much. Ms. Garcia, did you want to say a few words? Thank you very much for your patience this morning.
Thank you very much. I think my family got a crash course on city council today, so yay for that. Thank you for, councilmembers, I want to thank everybody, Mr. Blumenfield, for your time and for the support that I have. I appreciate my time, my position here at city, as a commissioner, I take this very heavily and very seriously, as I represent the city every day. I am very grateful to Mayor Garcetti, and mayor grateful for Chief Staff Anna Guerrero for appointing me and reappointing me again to this position. Also, want to thank the support of my family, my husband, my kids, who are always there for me and give me no issues or no trouble having this beautiful position, and as a matter of fact, are always on the verge of making sure that I do a good job here. So, thank you, everybody, for having me here, and I look forward to representing this city for many more years.
Thank you very much, and thank you very much for agreeing to serve again. Members, are there any other questions? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on this, on item 16. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Members, let's go ahead and vote on item, I'm sorry, item 38 is now before us, we have cards on this item. Wayne Spindler and Arnold Sachs on item 38. Wayne Spindler on item 38, you're not coming forward, and Arnold Sachs, are you still here? Wayne Spindler on item thirty-eight, you're not coming forward, and Arnold Sachs, are you still here?
And, Madam President, I would just remind you and the speakers that-
Mr. Spindler, it doesn't appear like you want to speak. I'm gonna move, I'm gonna move on. Does not want to speak. Okay, and Arnold Sachs is not in the room? Any other speakers on this item? Mr. O'Farrell? Item thirty-eight, sir.
Thank you, Madam President. So, item thirty-eight is another one that is mostly good, but it has some real issues. It is in relation to AB three oh two from Assemblymember Mark Berman. And colleagues, what this would do, it would require the establishment of safe parking sites on all California community colleges, of which there are one hundred and fourteen in the state of California, serving two-point-one million students. The reason this is really important to talk about is it's kind of like the previous bill that we just talked about, and then several other bills that we've had to take positions against recently. It looks really good on paper, but they have significant flaws, which is why three oh two, AB three oh two, needs to absolutely be amended before we can support this. And here's why. The mandate is fine if it was funded, but it's not, right? So it's a reimbursement situation using community development block grant funds. But that's the only other mechanism. The problem with this is that not all one hundred and fourteen campuses across the state of California have any funding sources whatsoever in order to effectuate safe parking at their campuses. Now, this is something that we've become very familiar with from the very ground up, which is where we dwell, in the LA City Council. And that is Dr. Mary Gallagher, who is the president of LACC in my district, the thirteenth district in Hollywood, has a plan, and we're working very closely with her, to create two hundred spaces of safe parking on campus for students that go to LACC, many of whom are homeless. A high percentage of the students at LACC Hollywood campus are homeless. Now, I think where we're, the intersection we're at right now is the following. And we just had this conversation about resources from the state. And Mr. Sadio talked about a surplus. Well, here's what that surplus is. It's twenty-one-point-four billion dollars surplus, according to Governor Newsom's own finance department. And in relation to the conversation, conversation we just had about the two bill, we talked about, and we lamented, the fact that Sacramento, they're, they're trying to take away local control. Now they're also trying to mandate unfunded programs, and imposing that on us. Well, I would rather they learn from what LACC is already planning to do, and actually, if they're going to mandate something, offer another avenue, if they're going to mandate it across all one hundred and fourteen campuses. So to that end, colleagues, you might have some questions about this. So I've invited Chancellor of LACC D, Dr. Francisco Rodriguez, and Board Member and former President of the Board of Trustees, College Board of Trustees, Scott Svankin,
Good afternoon.
To answer some questions for you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
And, and gentlemen, if you could, if you could convey why you feel very passionately that, that we could support this if it's either amended, or there's an exemption because of the unfunded part of this. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, and members of the City Council. Madam Chair, thank you very much. Again, Francisco Rodriguez, the Chancellor of the LACC D. Thank you for taking time on this, indeed, Assembly Bill three oh two. It's well-intended, but indeed has a significant cost associated with the implementation of such a bill across all hundred and fourteen campuses. It would cause an undue financial burden for LACC D. We estimate that the cost to implement such a bill would be about two million dollars annually, on top of our other operational costs for the variety of implementation. Most of that is security, but it also deals with custodial, sanitation, other kinds of implementation bills. So we have taken a support, if amended, position at LACC D. We would encourage the City Council to do the same, and we here would answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Svankin.
Thank you so much, Councilmember. Council President Protem, thank you for allowing us to be here. Councilmembers, it's an honor to be here with you. Just to, to highlight a couple of issues. You know, the state mandates a lot of things. In the last couple of years, we've gotten zero reimbursement for any of their mandates. And what that means is that all these unfunded mandates take away, often, from our students' needs and services on our campuses. We are here to urge you to support this resolution and to partner with us. We have been working for the last three years. During my presidency, we began a, an effort to look at, how do we help our homeless students and our food insecure students? And under the Chancellor's and the Board's leadership, we have created food pantries at all nine colleges. We have undertaken partnerships with both, and hoping to build a robust partnership with the city and the county to help our homeless students find housing. This bill is not a solution. It is a well-intended effort, but it doesn't solve the problems of our students who struggle every day to meet the needs of themselves and often their families. So the fact is, is much like the other bill you spoke of, this bill is well-intentioned but does not solve our students' problems. And we see them every day, and we've had them graduate. We just had graduation last week, and at all nine colleges. And we saw thousands of students, some who were homeless during their academic years. We're, we're undertaking an initiative to partner with the county and the city to get vouchers, so our students don't sleep in their cars. We're hoping that if this bill passes, that the state will provide that two million dollars. Or that if forced to do this, we can partner with you to figure out a way to keep our students safe, and our campuses safe, and make sure that the people parking on our campuses have a reason to be there because they want a better life. So I want to thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell, for your partnership. And I will tell you, off the record, just for this room, that at times, we do allow, we do allow people, when they need to be safe on our campuses, to stay. But we, if we got hundreds or thousands of students. So some statistics you should remember. Two-hundred-and-thirty thousand students a year go to our colleges. Nine campuses, nine hundred square miles, five million constituents I have that I share with the other board members. This problem is serious, and we, with your help, will get the state legislature to understand that they can't tell LACC D that you have to do something without the resources to do it in a humane way. And together, working with councilmembers throughout this city and the county of LA that we represent, we can provide better for our students, but this isn't the solution. Having people park in our campuses without services, counseling, paths to permanency doesn't make any sense, and I hope you will all join together and support Councilmember O'Farrell in, in asking the legislature to do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, are there any questions? Mr. Rue? Followed by Mr. Corretts.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Councilmember O'Farrell. This is a great resolution, and thank you for the explanation. And, but I just want to make it clear, your resolution, it's actually three parts. There's three things that we're supporting. And the first two, it's an obvious no-brainer. It's to support the governor's fiscal year nineteen-twenty budget proposal that provides ten million for rapid rehousing for students. And of course, seeking the amendment to, to the budget that this program also includes funding for the California Community Colleges. Those two, no-brainer, completely agree. I just had one question, I had a few questions about support for AB three oh two. So in AB three oh two, it states that as a matter of state law, mandated programs need to be reimbursed. So what is the, what is the district, community districts' understanding of this reimbursement process?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rue. I'll, I'll take that, that question. This law does indeed follow the, the state mandated reimbursement process, but as a practical matter, we understand that the reimbursements are rarely reimbursed one-for-one. And that for the last two years, as Mr. Svankin has shared, the reimbursement process has not succeeded in providing any reimbursable mandated cost to any community colleges. So for us, as a practical matter, it's a, it's a sunk cost for the districts as a practical matter. Now, those, those dollars do not materialize, sir.
And, you know, I just learned something this morning. It's a little shocking, but I want you to better explain it. And the question, and I'll just leave, tell, give you the question. Is there a line item in the state budget for this program? Or will LACC D have to apply for CDBG dollars? Can you kind of explain that?
There is not a line item in the state budget to support the implementation of Assembly Bill three oh two. The amendments that we have forwarded to Mr. Berman, the author, have been, one, to make it permissive for districts. There are seventy-two separate districts. Make it permissive. If the districts feel that they want to pursue that, they can. Secondly, to have an opt-out clause for those colleges that are engaged in significant efforts to support food insecure and homeless students. And third, to have a sunset clause of twenty-twenty-two. So those are the amendments that we have forwarded to the author. They have yet to be implemented or incorporated, but there is no line item in LACC D. We do not have, in the state budget, or, nor do we have any resources that we have allocated for this. We would have simply, if passed in its current state untouched, would have to come up with the cost. The implementation would take place July first, twenty-twenty.
So let me get this straight, and this is what Councilmember O'Farrell was kind of trying to state. So state law mandates that every mandated program needs to be reimbursed. So they're passing this three oh two to require you to have safe parking for students, but after that becomes mandated, you have to actually apply to get reimbursed, and there's no guarantee you will be reimbursed.
It's likely that we won't be reimbursed, and if we are, it won't be one-for-one. So it is an undue cost and burden that is set to the, the districts. It is an unfunded mandate in practicum.
So, you know, I'm very torn about this, because obviously, we're talking about homelessness, and we definitely know that, not just in community colleges, but LAUSD, majority of our student, a percentage, a big enough percentage of our students are homeless. So, and in light of these recent homeless number, number count numbers, this is a new day, and I believe we all need to buy into solving homelessness. But at the same time, I, I don't believe in unfunded mandates, which happens all the time. So, Councilmember O'Farrell, I don't know if you would take this as a friendly, but I like to do two things, to say, and, and also for LACC D, if you're agreeable to this, as well as Councilmember O'Farrell, be amenable to, to, that this mandated program, that if it were to have two things. One, funded, if it's, if it's funded, actually funded with a line item in the budget. And two, also have a sunset clause that you were guys been asking for. So obviously, we would support this if funded.
Mr. O'Farrell?
And colleagues, here's what I would support, if it's going to be amended at all. I wrote this out. Right now, it states that, with the concurrence of the mayor, that by this, adoption of this resolution, you see, it's a long one. And support AB three oh two Berman, which would establish safe parking programs at all community colleges sites, if amended, to state that establishment of the program is optional and not mandatory. Here's what I'm willing to entertain. Comma, unless alternate sources of, of funding are identified by the state to pay for the program in full.
Yeah.
That's an amendment to this instruction I would accept.
I'm okay with that, yeah.
So he's accepted that?
Yeah. The, the only thing, the only thing that we, I want to make sure gets covered is, for the impacts on the community, we have to be able to manage the program. And so the Board of Trustees is very much interested in if we can have the funding to do this. But just understand that the problem is different in each campus, and we have to be able to, we want to do the program, but we have to be able to set time, place, limits.
Then I'm going to modify it further. Mandatory, comma, unless alternate sources of funding are identified by the state to pay for the program and management of the program in full at all campuses across the state.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell.
Is that good?
That's good to me.
Mr. O'Farrell?
And I can give you the exact language.
Second.
All right. That just makes it stronger, and that way, it's contingent upon modifying the language and modifying the bill.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you got all that?
So that motion was made by Mr. O'Farrell, and seconded by Mr. Rue.
Yes. The amendment, the amendment.
The amendment.
The amendment.
And we have Mr. Corretts also that would like to speak on this item?
Yeah, I wanted to briefly say something similar. I know the community colleges finances, and they're already struggling. They're not in a position to just fulfill this unfunded mandate as much as they would like to. It will come out of educating their students, which should be their, their first priority. And the state, unfortunately, as a former member of the legislature, I know we violate our own laws that we pass, and we say that everything is, is to be funded, and there shouldn't be unfunded mandates, and yet the state legislature positions them. So I support exactly what the, the amendment state. I think that handles the issue. I know the district wants to do it, but they can't unless it's funded, so a, a great suggestion. And hopefully, that happens, and, and you actually can utilize your districts and provide the security and the sanitation and everything that you need on those campuses. And thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing this forward, and Mr. Rue, for an excellent amendment.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. O'Farrell, to close?
Yeah, just, just, I want to talk about on-the-ground practicalities, and what LACC, under Dr. Gallagher's vision, is accomplishing. And here's what I think. If it's an unfunded mandate, the next step is a discussion about increasing enrollment fees. And what a shame that would be, because our community colleges are really the last stop for folks who otherwise wouldn't be able to get into a four-year college. That is our entry level. That is a leg up out of financial struggle and difficulty, as Mr. Svankin talked about, the food donations, three, three times a week at, at the campuses. So I, I also want to say this. If this was an unfunded, unfunded mandate at LACC in Hollywood right now, Dr. Gallagher probably wouldn't have supported stopping the demolition of the old gym and locker room, where we are actually going to have homeless students be able to store their belongings and take care of their personal hygiene. That decision was made because the financials work out. But if it, if we had to take a two-million-dollar hit, they might say, "Just tear the building down and let's finance," you know, "Let's, let's, we need to finance an income again." And then also, like I mentioned, the safe parking plan that, that we're working to create there. So I want to make sure that, you know, the message today to me, to Sacramento, is, please, for the love of God, give the city of Los Angeles tools that we can use that actually help people. I, I think that with the twenty-one-point-four-billion-dollar surplus, that they could do a lot more and actually work with us on policies and ordinances that work for Los Angeles, because chances are, if they will work on bills that are applicable to Los Angeles and actually help people, they'll probably be good for the rest of the state. So I think that's the takeaway from today's council session. And thank you, gentlemen, for being here to answer these questions and advocate for this.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, let's open the roll on item number thirty-eight as amended. Close the roll and tally the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you, and we are going to-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you for our community college representatives for joining us. We are going to continue item twenty-seven and twenty-eight to tomorrow. And we are going to begin taking further public comments on a variety of items.
And then item twenty-seven and twenty-eight will be continued to tomorrow, which is June twelfth.
Next, Mr. Spindler. And you have one minute for cards, under all the items on item number one, plus item number thirty, thirty-two, thirty-six, thirty-seven.
But, yeah. What about Current Prices Project? I want to talk on that.
So, Mr. Spindler, please talk on the items that are before us. If you don't want to talk on the items that you signed up for, that the-
Yeah, I gotta talk about the liens. That's okay. Fuck all the liens. Fuck all the liens. But the big thing is, despite the liens, you know, and you can see how upset everybody is about the way this meeting is being conducted, we had a big fucking project today.
So, Mr. Spindler, you're off-topic. Mr. Spindler, you can talk on items 30, 32, 36, or 37, or you're done.
Mr. Spindler, this is your last warning to stay on topic.
Mr. Sidiya's been waiting here. We've all been waiting for the fake.
You're off-topic. I suggest we ask Mr. Spindler to sit down.
Mr. Spindler, if you would take a seat. Our next speaker, I believe, is Ace Katana. And you can speak on items 36 and 37.
Hello, folks. I was asked to comment with regards to, I believe these items are regards to HUD's move to evict undocumented families from public housing. Is that correct? I didn't see the number.
36 is the item on the HUD proposed rule.
Okay. I think we need to look at this as a direct assault on the families of Los Angeles. The impact, the number of people who would be made homeless by the Trump administration's proposal is enormous. The impact directly on our immigrant families would be enormous. It is, it is going to be a long fight, and it is going to be up to Los Angeles and the government of Los Angeles to take drastic steps to push back and support the families in their fight against the racist Trump administration. So I hope that everyone here is committed to making sure that our families can stay together in public housing in Los Angeles.
Thank you. Next speaker is Eric Previn, to be followed by Jed Periot. Mr. Previn here, he's not here. So we'll move on to Jed Periot. Apparently also not here. Johnny Coleman. Apparently also not here. Molly Lambert. Molly Lambert not here. Annie Orchier. Also not here. Joanna Swan. Apparently not here as well. Liz Hirsch. I believe she's left also. Molly Lambert. Bill Perzilucki. Okay, and please state your name.
Hi, Bill Perzilucki, People Organized for West Side Renewal, speaking on item 36. And many of those were members who were here putting in comments to show support, who couldn't stay for the hearing. Obviously, this is, as many of you have heard from us before, we've done meetings with your offices about the situation faced by mixed immigration status families in public and subsidized housing. We strongly urge the city council to stand with them. I suspect you will, and oppose this HUD rule. I also want to take this moment, while we're paying attention to this constituency, to reiterate that these are families who are paying prorated rent. So by definition, they're low-income families paying more than 30% of their income, sometimes much, much more. We have one woman who has an 11-year-old with Down syndrome who's paying over 100% of her income in rent and can't do that for many more months. So we need to oppose this rule, and then we want to work with you to take further action to figure out how we can support these families. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Roth. Not here. Jester Suarez. Jester Suarez not here. John Motter.
Hi, John Motter with Ground Game LA. I'm also a member of power, and I want to reiterate what Bill just said, and really ask you all to, you know, stand with our members in power, many of whom are from mixed immigration status families. And this is a direct attack on them from the Trump administration. This serves absolutely no kind of practical purpose. It's just racist. Given that 10% of our city is undocumented, and many of those people live in public housing, it's, this rule is hitting Los Angeles harder than anywhere else, probably in the country. So I hope you stand with us in opposing this rule and, and working against Trump's war on immigrants and undocumented people in the future, because there's a whole variety of issues and ways that we're confronting it, including with the refugee crisis at the border now. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to item 36 specifically. Steve Dulcey, to be followed by Rebecca Lieb and Taiji Miyagawa. Any of them here? If not, Arnold Sachs is the last speaker on this item.
So yes, thank you. This is one moment, you know, excuse me, before I start, sir, I'd like a ruling. So I signed up for multiple items, and I concluded, you just called public comment on those people to speak on item 36, right? I'm not speaking on, I want to, I want to get an opinion from the city attorney.
Just 36 for now.
Mr. Sachs, if you want an opinion from me, let me speak. If you want to speak on item, you have one minute left, because you already spoke twice for two minutes. If you want to speak on this item, that's great. If you want to speak on another item, you pick which of the items that are left that you want to speak on. You have one minute left.
I've spoken one time here. I spoke on the one item that was called earlier on a parking, on a parking, that was one minute. I only spoke one minute. So I should have two minutes left.
Okay, you've got two minutes. You're correct.
Okay, so...
You can speak on this or not, or you can speak on the items you signed up for. You've got two minutes.
All right, so the question is, again, you had people speak public comment on this, on item 36 just now.
You've got, you've got two minutes to speak on any of the remaining items you signed up for.
I'm asking for a clarification, sir. I know how much time I have. You evidently didn't. You had people speak public comment on item 36. They just talked about Trump's administration.
This is not a debate. Please start his time.
Let me make this as clear as you can. You have two minutes. You can speak on any of the remaining items you signed up for. Pick what you want to do.
Okay. Now you can have your two minutes, or not?
So, this is not a Trump problem. This is a city-state-California problem, because HUD has had rules regarding minimum payment since, oh, I don't know, item 37, the Housing Community Development Act of 1980. So unless you address those problems from 1980, you are getting the same recycle that you get from city council. Wash, rinse, repeat. Trump didn't raise the minimum wage here. And by the way, what is the city's opinion when homelessness increases by another 10%? But it's good for Measure HHH, because people will be thrown out of their apartments because they're making too much money to qualify for their rent vouchers. But we can move homeless people in off the street, so it's a win-win. No, 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 it's not a win-win. It's a load of bullshit. Please pay attention to the language that they use here. You just had an item on community colleges. Walk right around the city and find out how many community colleges there really are. Santa Monica is no longer a community college. Los Angeles Community College is no longer a community college. El Camino is no longer a community college. Oh, I'm getting to my public comment, by the way, so it doesn't really matter. What you should be concerned about is this item number 27, the environmental impact report. You know, they do environmental impact reports on buildings that have been demolished already. They don't do them on the buildings that, before they're demolished. So all that crap, especially the gas you get from city council, ends up sticking to that concrete. There's an asbestos scare at a county board of supervisors building. All that crap sticks to the building, and when they drop that building down, all that crap is free-floating. That's why you need to do an environmental impact report before there's any demolition. Listen to your city council members, and they'll go on and on about unfunded mandates. Why are you talking about unfunded mandates? Pay attention.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Sidiya.
I'd like to amend items 36 and 37 to additionally adopt the CLA report. The recommendations are on file.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Seeing no further speakers on the queue, if we could open the roll on the item as amended, close the roll and tally the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, let's vote on item 30. No one on the queue. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
10 ayes.
That item has passed. Item 32. If we could open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
10 ayes.
That item has passed as well. Let's move to item 1.
And, Mr. President, on item 1, the Department of Building and Safety recommends that items 1F and 1J be received and filed in as much as the fees have been paid in full, and not all the remaining items, that those liens be confirmed.
Okay, so that will be the case without objection. So let's open the roll, close the roll, tally the vote.
10 ayes.
And that has passed as well. Now we have a number of general public comments, cards to take up.
And, excuse me, Mr. President, there have also been requests from members to send items 41 and item 50E forthwith today.
Yes.
Without objection, that'll be so ordered. And now we'll begin general public comment, beginning with Dan, to be followed by Veronica Dunn and Liliana Sanchez. Is there a Dan? There is not. Is there Veronica Duran present? Please come up.
Good afternoon, Mr. President. Los Angeles Rescue Mission, Hope Gardens, both under CEO Andy Bales. I want a grievance done on Andy Bales. Me and my children were victims of a crime sent to his shelter from L.A. Family Housing, just to put on affordable housing. I was beat up when I was in the shower, attacked from the behind. CEO Andy Bales is aware of this situation. There was blood all over the room. He took my kids in the room, told them that your mom's not coming back. How can L.A. Family Housing send families to the Rescue Mission, Hope Gardens? It's not safe for families. I want a grievance on Andy Bales. They tell me that there is no affordable housing, but the caseworker put their families in affordable housing. I'm still in the streets with my kids. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a feeling most of the people have left, so I'll call them one by one. If nobody stands up, we'll go to the next one. Sandra Soto. Not here. Lydia Grant. Laura Soto. Gus Torres.
Good afternoon. My name is Gus Torres. I'm here on behalf of UA Local 250 and our thousand working men and women that are pipe fitters, welders, and apprentices. I want to remind you that the jobs created by the industry benefit people from across California, across many diverse ethnic and class backgrounds. New regulations or changes to codes will lead to the shutdown of oil and gas production in the city of L.A., which would devastate hundreds of families that will be forced out of work. Governor Brown said, "A world without oil is not an option." Let's keep the jobs local, the workers and residents safe, and the environment closely monitored, rather than send the industry off to third-world countries. Thank you for your time, and God bless.
Thank you. Doug Summers. Shamari Davis. Edmund Blunt. To be followed by Luis Salvador.
Hello and good morning to everybody. Good afternoon, should I say. I'm Edmund Blunt. My name is Edmund Blunt. I am here with Arms of L.A. to support keeping oil industry jobs social. Local, I mean. California has the strictest, safest, and environmental regulations in the nation. When it comes to oil and gas productions, when it comes to gas and, oil and gas production, sorry, my apologies. By keeping the industry here locally, we are able to follow and enforce these strict regulations. The industry is also committed to hiring locally and hiring to the community, in the communities they operate in. I urge you to think, and think about the men and women that are employed in the industry and the economic benefits that the industry provides. Do apologize.
Thank you. Next speaker, Luis Salvador, followed by Jake Bertuski.
Good afternoon. My name is Luis Salvador. I am here with Arms of L.A. to keep our community safe and keep our industries and employment opportunities strong. Jobs created by the oil and gas industry benefit people across California and across many diverse ethnic and class backgrounds. When it comes to health concerns, I encourage you to look at other health-related impacts on residents like those exposed to flight paths, freeways, and power lines. Don't narrow in on an industry that supports this economy and provides good wages. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake Bertuski. Apparently not here. Gina Burnett. Apparently not here. Oh, there she is.
Good afternoon, Gina Burnett, Creed, L.A. The new green taxes on the city would increase electricity and gas prices and make it extremely expensive for the average resident to live here. In a city where homelessness is already out of control, the green taxes would eliminate thousands of good-paying jobs and hurt working families. Families are already living paycheck to paycheck, and we can't afford to make things more expensive. We need a plan that relies on locally-produced energy to keep us going while we increase our use of alternative energy. We need solutions that replace, not eliminate. And that puts, and that puts Angelinos first. Thank you.
Thank you. Liliana Sanchez. Not here. Jose Pina. To be followed by George Nunez or Jorge Nunez.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Jose Pina with Creed, L.A. And we frequently hear about the transitioning of workers in the oil and gas industry to green jobs. However, research shows that the average wage for these green jobs is 42% lower than the average oil and gas production job, and 33% less than the average oil and gas pipeline and construction sector job. Replacing oil and gas jobs with green jobs simply means more people on the streets and a greater demand for affordable housing. We should protect the oil and gas industry here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Gio Galarza. Piedmont Brown.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Gio Galarza. I'm a resident of Los Angeles.
I'm a resident of Los Angeles. Make no mistake, even as, even as we increase renewable energy production, we need oil and gas today and tomorrow. If we shut down product, production now, where do we get our oil? It makes no sense to make ourselves poor by killing local jobs and revenues while enriching others for the oil we need. Thank you very much.
Piedmont Brown, to be followed by Sonia Keith, Daniel Morales, and Dale Lanier.
Good afternoon. My name is Piedmont Brown. I was reading some of the buffer zones of 2,500 feet from areas around the city, or housing, or schools. I kind of don't understand it, because eventually you'll have to shut down Jiffy Lube, gas stations, and shutting down the production would have a great economical impact of the people that are employed with such products. So I'd really give a good consideration, look at the future of the city, of unemployment, and possibly could even hinder the progress of the homeless. So I'd take a good look at this, and thank you.
Thank you. Sonia Keith, Daniel Morales, Dale Lanier, all I believe not here. Allison Tracy and Zach Strazers.
Hi, my name is Allison Tracy. I'm here on behalf of IBW Local 11, representing over 12,000 workers. I represent working people who will bear the pain of the misguided 2,500-foot setback around the production oil facilities. We work very hard every day to make sure that everything is up to environmental standards. Safety is very important to us. The proposed setback does not think about the repercussions of getting rid of oil and gas production. It supports getting rid of opportunities for union workers like me. Keep jobs here in L.A. Thank you.
Thank you. Zach Strazers.
Hi. So first of all, I applaud you guys for all your patience today, and I've come to enough city hall hearings that I know, man, you guys have some thick skin, and so I thank you for all the things that you take time and put up with, and year in and year out. So kudos. And I'm here with Arms today, and you'll see me and a lot of my constituents come, you know, on a weekly basis. And one of the things we're kind of stuck on right now is this 2,500-foot setback, and I think in light of all the things we hear about housing and the economy and jobs, it's really important to understand how wide the breadth of impact is if you approve the 2,500-foot setback. It has a long-term residual impact in our economy. 300,000 jobs in the state of California that would potentially be impacted, and that's just in production. That doesn't deal with logistics, transportation, all the people that, that are involved in manufacturing that have to do with oil. So understand that this issue may seem relatively small, and it, and it may seem like it doesn't have anything to do with housing or these other elements, but it's a huge issue. It's a keynote issue. Keep your eyes on it. Please vote no on the setback. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Last speaker is Arnold Sacks, who I do not believe is present. And not seeing him, we will close general public comment. Let's see. Mr. Spindler is not on the agenda, so he can sit down or... Not here. Okay, it looks like you may have one more minute, so just to be on the safe side or not so.
Mr. Spindler, you've got your minute of general.
All right, so after that fake TRO your council pulled on me last week, no more of that stuff. It's going to stop. But I have good news for Mr. Weezer. You are now in second place on the horse race to which city council member is going to be indicted first. Two urban girls. Yes, they found out about the claim. They're the lovely fake Mrs. Price. So now I want to know, Mr. City Attorney, when was current Price married to Dell Richardson Price? Where's the marriage license? Where's the marriage license? I, I know where Mr. Weezer's marriage license is. Where is the marriage license? You've been covering up a fraud since 2009. So you want to go to court? You want to perjure yourself what you did before Judge Cops? We're going to find out about when he was married.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Your time is up. Thank you, Mr. Spindler. Your time is up. Your time is up. Please, please remove him, sergeants, from the podium and return him to his seat. And if he doesn't stop speaking and disrupting the meeting, please remove him.
Okay, Mr. Spindler.
Please remove him. He's still continuing to speak in the audience.
Okay, Mr. Spindler, you've been ordered removed, and you're continuing to disrupt... Mr. Spindler?
I'm still continuing to disrupt the meeting, shouting in the middle of the aisle.
You've been ordered removed. You're not leaving quietly. Please go. And as usual, he's shouting on the way out, and we can't continue our business while this happens.
As we're unable to resume the meeting because Mr. Spindler's continuing to shout while being removed.
Okay, he's just about out. Okay.
Adam Clerk, what is still before us?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
Posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Members, any announcements? Mr. Blumenfield? Oh. Mr. Price has an announcement.
Economic Development will be meeting at 1:30.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll rise for adjourning motions. I'm looking first to my left. I see Mr. Blumenfield.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in the memory of Freddie Vinaigas. He was with the city family. It's with a deep sorrow and heavy heart. We mourn the loss of Streets L.A. family member, 38-year-old Freddie Vinaigas. Freddie lost his life in a tragic accident on Friday afternoon, June 7, at a street paving worksite around Tahunga Avenue and Oxnard Street. LAFD and LAPD responded to the scene immediately, but unfortunately Freddie had passed away on the scene. The mayor's crisis response team responded to the scene also to help his fellow workers cope with this tragedy. The accident is a cruel reminder that so many members of our city family put their lives on the line every day. Freddie had a heart of gold and was always there to help anyone. He went from contract janitorial service to one of our own city family members, and he was so happy to be part of the city's street services. God rest your soul, Freddie. Our prayers are with you and your family. Information for the funeral services will be forthcoming. Streets L.A. did do a GoFundMe page to support his family, which can be found at www.gofundme.com/memorial-fund-for-freddy-vinaigas. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Blumenfield. Looking to my right, I see Mr. Kocorian.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to add on to Mr. Blumenfield's comments. Mr. Vinaigas had his tragic accident while serving the people in my district, and so when I got that call, it was a, another stark reminder for all of us that the people who serve the city, the men and women who get up every morning to go to work for the people of the city, often put their lives on the line, doing dangerous work, so that we can have a city that's functional, that serves the people, or the constituents that we represent who demand those services. And Mr. Vinaigas's family had no way of knowing that when he went up, got up this morning, got dressed, and went to work, that that would be his last day going to work. And, you know, I think it's a reminder that all of the 30,000 employees that serve the people of this city serve it in a way that sometimes has, involves great sacrifice for them and for their family. And I was deeply saddened to hear this news. And, Mr. Blumenfield, thank you for the adjournment. May Freddie Vinaigas rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Kocorian. Seeing nothing further, on my right, I do have an adjournment that I would like to present. Mr. Smith mentioned this last week, but I'd like to do a more formal adjournment in memory of Maggie Wayland. Margaret Mary Maggie Wayland served the city of Los Angeles for more than 47 years, beginning in 1967, when she joined the Civil Service Department, now known as the Personnel Department, as a clerk typist. While studying for her degree at Cal State L.A., Maggie continued to work for the city in an intermittent capacity in various departments until she graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree in history in 1974 and returned to full-time status. After being appointed as a management assistant within the Department of Wreck and Parks in 1977, she quickly advanced through the ranks and was promoted to personnel analyst, then senior personnel analyst by 1980. She served as assistant personnel director at Recreation and Parks in the early 1990s. Always a champion of animals, big and small, Maggie took over at the L.A. Zoo as acting director before returning to Wreck and Parks, where she's appointed the personnel director in 1996, then assistant general manager less than four years later. Her record of achievements in service to the city prompted Mayor Richard Reardon to tap Maggie as the general manager of the Personnel Department in June of 2000. She served 14 years as general manager at Personnel under four mayors, directing the complex operations of the department, both during times of economic boom and fiscal downturn. A recognized authority in the field of human resources, she had authored a chapter in the book, Leadership Secrets of Local Government Human Resource Officials. Maggie brought vast experience to her roles as chair of the city's Joint Labor Management Benefits Committee, overseeing the city's $229 million Flex Benefits Program, as a member of the city's Board of Deferred Compensation Administration, which manages a $3.5 billion Deferred Compensation Retirement Plan, and of the city's Executive Emergency Management Board, which is responsible for mobilization and deployment of city involuntary resources in the event of a major disaster, and outside of the city, as a member of the USC Master of Public Administration Advisory Board. Even after retirement, Maggie was an active member of the International Public Management Association for Human Resources as a certified professional and as a regular contributor to their monthly magazine, HR News. Maggie served for six years as the organization's exec, on the organization's executive council, and was elected its president in 2010. And as president, her expertise and influence moved beyond the borders of the United States into the international arena, where she represented the organization at conferences from London to Beijing and Dubai to Canada. And for her broad scope of accomplishments in her field, she was presented the Muriel Morse Achievement Award by the Western Region of that organization, the highest honor her colleagues could bestow. She was also passionate about being of service to her community, and the governor appointed her to a seat on the local selective service board, where she served for more than 26 years. She served for three years as a Girl Scout leader and as a member of the city of Alhambra's Parks and Rec Board of Commissioners. A native of Topeka, Kansas, Maggie came to Southern California in 1957 with her family when her father's employer, the Atchison-Topeka and the Santa Fe Railway, transferred him to their West Coast operations. Maggie is survived by her husband, Tom, daughter Patricia, son-in-law Peter Sanders, step-grandson Jack, and five siblings, and of course, she will be sorely missed by all who knew her. May she rest in peace. And seeing no, no other adjournments and no other business before us, we are adjourned.
Awarenesses, somatic work, EMDR, a whole collection of different kinds of healings. And art plays a really important part of healing. And our survivors at POV created a banner, and it's back here, and I hope that they would lift it up so you can see the banner that they created. Can you lift it?
Lift it up.
Can you lift it up?
Yeah.
Long, tall arms. Woo! There's no excuse, just like Mark said. So now it's my great pleasure, and I'm so appreciative of Nuri really talking about this important collaboration that POV has with Metro, the Metropolitan Transportation Authority. And they've, again, talk about loyalty and engagement. They've been very involved in Denim Day over the last few years. And this program is a really important program to be, the hotline is a real important program to POV. And I'm very happy to introduce the chief of staff for Los Angeles County Metro, Nadine Lee, where she's in charge of a lot of the collaborations across the agency to improve mobility in the region. Nadine Lee.
Thank you very much. I am so thrilled to be here and so honored to meet Patty. I'm really excited about this. So Metro is glad to partner with Peace Over Violence on Denim Day here in Los Angeles. We have encouraged our own 10,000 employees to wear denim today in support of this important cause. At Metro, we take sexual harassment extremely seriously. We have a zero-tolerance policy regarding sexual harassment within the agency, and that means that a person's employment, whether you're male or female, can be terminated at Metro for these types of behaviors and offenses. Women are equals and should be given the same respect and opportunities that...